I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission to order. First item on our agenda is the approval of the July 1st, 2014 Agenda.
So moved. Second?
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have an agenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on June 3rd, 2014, and the special meeting on June 17th, 2014. Does anybody have any corrections or amendments to those minutes?
I move that we accept those minutes as sent out.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Financial report, staff?
This is Anderson with staff. The budget report you have in front of you is from May 2014, which puts us at about ninety-one point six percent through our fiscal calendar. As you can see, going down through the different expense and revenue portions, we're below ninety-one point six percent in the larger categories. In some of the smaller categories, we're actually a little bit over, but not by much in terms of the economic development one, which is just one of the salaries. The revenue side, we're over on the larger categories for sale of property and salary reimbursement, which is grant money coming back in and through our contract with Blackhawk County. So overall, we're in good shape for the year.
Any questions on the financial report? Look for a motion to receiving place those on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That brings us up to our oral presentations. This is for anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to anything not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. First is a hearing for a site plan amendment. Time's now four oh one, and a hearing scheduled at this time. This is a request by Brent Dollstrom for a site plan amendment in the R2 RP Plan One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of five new twin home dwellings located southeast of 5609 Summerland Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on June 19th, 2014." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourselves by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
This is Andero, staff. The request to construct the five duplexes would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area and would appear to fit the character of the existing nearby development. Proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding traffic conditions of the public streets in the area. Dysert Road is located to the east, and East Orange Road to the south, and both are classified as collectors. Summerland Drive is to the north and is classified as a private street. A private drive with a hammerhead turnaround is shown accessing the proposed duplexes from Dysert Road. City Fire Marshal has indicated concerns with further development in the subdivision, noting that only one access point exists to over fifty houses in the Summerland subdivision. Currently, the international fire code requires a second access to the subdivision in situations where more than thirty houses exist. Applicant is proposing to construct a twenty-foot-wide drive that will connect to Summerland Drive through Track B to the north, providing a second access point into the adjoining subdivision. Fire Marshal has also indicated that there should be no parking on both sides of the streets serving the proposed development. Area in question was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to R3 RP Plan Multiple District and R2 One and Two Family Residence District on September 4th, 2003. Surrounding land uses include, to the north, One and Two Family Residences, zoned R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District; south, Single Family Development, zoned R2; east, the Mobile Home Park, zoned R3; and to the west, One and Two Family Residents, zoned R3 RP. It will be necessary that stormwater management plans are submitted to the Engineering Department for review and approval. This request was tabled at the June Planning and Zoning Meeting to allow for the residents' time to address drainage issues. The applicant has indicated that the proposed development will not increase drainage issues and will, to some degree, help with drainage issues in the area. No areas of the site in question are located within a special flood hazard area. The planned residence district is a site plan-specific district, and changes to the site plan must be approved through a site plan amendment process as either a major or minor amendment. A portion of the site is currently zoned R3 RP. The remaining area of the parcel is zoned R2. In a separate request, the applicant is requesting to rezone the R... in a separate request, the applicant did request to rezone the property to R2 RP, which would allow for One and Two Family dwellings. Lot is two point three eight acres in size. Based on the density requirements for the R2, there shall be a minimum of four thousand square feet per family associated with a two-family development, which in this case equals out to twenty-six potential units. However, determining density in the RP is somewhat different, as the maximum number of drawing units permitted in the RP shall be determined by dividing the net area of the development by the minimum lot area per dwelling as required by the ordinance and multiplying it by a multiplier of one hundred and twenty-five percent. Therefore, the applicant could have up to thirty-three units upon the site. The applicant is only proposing ten units. On the submitted site plan, a new twenty-six-foot-wide private access drive is shown accessing the site from Dysert Road. This access point will line up directly across from the drive that accesses the Mobile Home Park on the east side of Dysert Road. At the end of the twenty-six-foot-wide access road, there is a hammerhead turnaround. There are dimensions listed on this hammerhead turnaround. In the near future, a request to name the private drive serving the proposed development will be coming before the planning commission. Each duplex will have a two-stall garage, which is twenty-two by twenty-two, and be one-story in height. The new duplexes will be sided with vinyl siding, which is similar to other dwellings in the area. Each unit will be two bedrooms with a dining area and eleven-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet of floor area or living space. At the June 3rd, 2014 Planning and Programming Zoning Commission, the commission voted unanimously tabled this request in order to address water drainage issues in the area. However, no plans addressing the drainage control have been submitted, and the consulting engineer will address these issues. Staff is recommending that the request for the site plan amendment to the R2 RP Plan Multiple Residence District be approved for the following reasons. Request is located within the primary growth area according to the City Waterloo Comprehensive Plan. Proposed use would not appear to have a negative impact upon the area and would appear to be compatible with already existing development in the area, which comprises a One and Two Family Residence, and the proposed development is within the density requirements as set forth in the zoning ordinance for this particular district, and with the condition that the final site plan meets all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment request?
Hi, I'm Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering. Sorry, didn't mean to... Just want to address the stormwater issues. Right now, if you look at the site, you can see we do have a topography map on the site, and you can see that it's basically a large hill that's... all the water is running to the west and northwest, and a majority of those lots, fifteen through twenty-one or twenty-two, is taking a large amount of the stormwater coming off of the site into their backyards. If we can get a site plan approved, then we can start the next step, which would be stormwater retention, design and control. That would allow us to come in and control that water that's running off of the site, store it, redirect it so it's running into Track C, which Track C was designed for stormwater runoff to allow it to get down into the retention basins further on down the track. So without a site plan approved, we really can't address the neighbors' concerns regarding stormwater runoff until we have that plan. Is there any questions that I can maybe address? Yeah, just to address what we're planning on doing is, if you look at the hammerhead, there will be stormwater retention underneath the hammerhead for all the impervious area. Impervious area being all the new pavement, all the roof structures that... where the stormwater can run off a little bit quicker than your grass and vegetated areas. We would also like to cut in a drainage swale along the northwesterly edge of the property. I think that would help reroute the existing stormwater right now that's running into the back of those lots along Summerland and redirect it down to the retention area and to Track C. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Carla Jo Hanson, 5713 Cimarron Lane. I live south of where the development is. You put that new road in that you're talking about, and all of that drainwater is going to fall into the ditch that we have behind our house and our lot. We're embedded with water. We had twelve inches in the last two weeks. My basement has water in it, and you're going to put a road there, and it's going to drain right back into that ditch, and we're going to drown. Can you fix it? Can you make it so we don't get any of that runoff water?
We have to retain everything on the road into our retention basin.
If you don't, we're in big trouble. Not just them, but ours too.
Anybody else like to speak for or against the site plan amendment?
Brad Wells, 5553 Summerland Drive. Part of the drainage, too, is after it hits the retention pond, that Track C, that's a big concern for all of the owners in Summerland because either our current or our now past developer has really neglected that to where Track C, which leads into our big, I think it's called a water easement perhaps, that cuts at an angle through all of Summerland. Dirt has eroded in, yeah, that track that goes just to the left of that pond in the middle, that's eroded in, and basically the water is not able to flow through Summerland as it's designed to. And as homeowners, we're trying to work through this, and we're trying to figure out if either the president or recently passed developer, Jason Guthrie with Iowa Development, if he's responsible or if the city of Waterloo is possibly responsible with it being tied to the IDED grant money that came in with the building of many of these homes. So we're looking for a fix to get through our main water easement drainage is what we're basically concerned about that goes through the middle of Summerland. The heavy rains that we had this last... the last couple of weeks, a lot of people all over eastern Iowa had a lot of flooding problems. We had water over the top of our roads. We had water coming out of a manhole. We're assuming there's probably some raw sewage maybe coming up into that water easement, which is, I'm sure, some serious health concerns for our neighbors, all the kids in the area, pets that we have. So I would recommend, until we can get things figured out or if we can work together on trying to get that main water easement fixed and corrected before we approve anything further, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to the site plan amendment?
I brought with me an iPad, and my technical supervisor will, my wife, will help me with that a little bit later. I have some pictures that I took.
Could you give your name and address real quick?
Oh, Gary Ullin, 5541 Summerland Drive. Been there six and a half years, so I'm one of the older quote-unquote residents of Summerland. I also have with me some of the words of the developer himself that I think will be very revealing as to the future of our subdivision. About ten days ago, I received this in the mail, and I was standing in the kitchen reading through it when my wife walked in, and I was laughing. And she said, "Well, what did we get in the mail today that's so funny?" I said, "Nothing." I said, "I'm laughing because I grew up in an era where men were not allowed to cry." I said, "Otherwise, I'd be crying," because I said, "I'm looking at this request of very the rules that I bought my land under, built my house under, and now we are looking at having two twelveplexes in our little slice of the American pie."
Sir?
And I was really upset.
If I could, the site plan request that's on the table now is for the twin homes rather than the twelveplexes. We can speak to the twelveplexes when that comes out.
I apologize.
Anybody else like to speak to the twin home site amendment?
Karen Stube, 5618 Summerland Park or Summerland Drive. One of the things that we have a concern with was at the last meeting, per the city's recommendation to the request, it clearly stated that, quote-unquote, "The proposed drive is twenty-four feet in width and would be sufficient enough to serve the duplexes." Summerland Park is a private subdivision, and the city does not support the subdivision in any way with maintenance of the subdivision, including their streets. Per the city, this road would serve the duplexes, and the cost of maintaining this road should not be added to the financial burden of the homeowners of Summerland Park. We would be opposed being given the additional financial burden by the city and would oppose that if the city of Waterloo wants a road added to serve the duplexes, that the city of Waterloo annex the street or make the duplexes responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the street before approving the plan and therefore removing the additional burden because we already have a major financial burden with having to fix the water issues because when the last project was approved and those were supposed to be addressed and taken care of, they weren't, and now those are going to be passed on to us. Also, that is Track B, which I believe that Track B is owned by the Summerland Park homeowners.
Darian Everding, 5649 Summerland Drive. I just wanted to speak once more to the Track C concerns of rerouting the drainage through Track C. Am I available to... able to pass images through for you to see? Okay. The three images on top you'll see are a view from 5649, which is Lot 25, the end of the lots that you said the water would be rerouted through. And you can see that's a very typical day. That's the Wednesday after the storms, Tuesday, June 17th. The following images are, however, what happened during the rain on Tuesday, June 17th. And while the rains that we have been receiving have been considered almost abnormal, this is, however, not an abnormal view of Summerland Drive. When we get water, these are the issues that we sustain and deal with, and in some of those images, you can also see, next to Karen's house, there is a sewage main that is gushing water up and out of it. So we are still, as mentioned before, trying to determine whether or not we have a health and safety concern of raw sewage entering our subdivision, which is unacceptable. And rather than just simply hear that we're going to reroute drainage, we'd like to have the opportunity to handle that, given the chance to organize our homeowners association and take care of that before we take on any additional water because when you add in the twin homes, it won't be just the water that's there. It's the water that will be retained by the basin, but that will be released eventually, and we will be dealing with that from the pavement and the roofs of the buildings added. So now that you can see what we deal with, we're asking for time to actually deal with
Larry Tickner, 5623 Summerland Drive. I'm right next to where I call it the creek, where the water all runs down through, and over where Darian lives there, I've seen water this year clear up to their driveway in there, actually the third lot from that drainage area. Talking about putting in a retaining pond and that, it can only hold so much water. We've got a two-and-a-half acre pond out there, and I've seen it coming out of that this year out of three sides of that two-and-a-half acre pond, and that's not taking all the water from the subdivision. That's actually about a quarter of the water, you know, that that pond is handling. So you can put in as big a retaining pond as you want. It can only handle so much, and it's not going to handle the water. Every time we get a rain now, except for last night, I've seen the water over the road, you know, the last few big rains. And since I've lived there, I've never seen it over the road on the north side, and this year I have. And I actually witnessed the water coming out of the manhole, and I know it is a sewer manhole because when they first started building out there, we had problems. And I had sewer department out there, we did, and they popped the lid, and it's sewer that comes down through there. My boy took pictures of it. I walked down there to look at it when I got home from work, and it smelled like sewer. So it was raw sewer coming out of it. And I already know that the city of Waterloo is having problems with the DNR through the sanitation department, and if you want to open up a can of worms, we'll just keep dumping more on, and we'll call the DNR up and have them come out and look at this, too.
Sir?
Yes.
Eric Johnson with the Beecher Law Firm here on behalf of the applicant, Brent Dollstrom or DS... is that DS? DS Rentals. As far as this proposal goes, there may be some problems with Track C, but Track C right now is owned by the homeowners association. I don't know whether that needs to be rechanneled or it's been overgrown, but that's owned by the homeowners association, has been for some time. As far as this site itself, what's going to happen on that development with the rechanneling of the water and the detention basin will lessen the water as it goes into that Track C? Does Track C need to be regrooved or have some work on it? My guess is it does. My client isn't going to increase their problems. He's going to hopefully be part of the solution, but there still has to be some work that needs to be done out there. He knows that. If he didn't do anything, there probably still needs to be work done out there. He hasn't done anything now, and they're having issues. I mean, that work needs to happen. But if you've seen the topography, he's going to cut down part of that hill to try and lessen some of the burden onto those homes adjoining to it. He's going to rechannel it, going to have the detention pond. What he's proposing is, we think, reasonable, and we think the staff's recommendation is correct, and it should be approved. Thanks.
Larry Tickner again, 5623 Summerland. The water that is coming down through that track area, it is actually coming from the south side where the lady that stood up first, that water comes from the development south of us. It comes down through there so fast that my boys want to whitewater wrap it with their kayaks down through there. It's not all coming off the hill that they're talking about. It's coming from the south. And it's not that it's messed up by us. The culverts are taking as much water as they can, and that's why it's going over the road. So it's not because of that Track C area needs to be fixed because the water that's coming in there now, it's such a volume that it is not... the culverts cannot handle that.
Can I play a video while you talk?
Okay. And it can't handle the water that's coming in there now. And I agree with you. It's not all coming off that hill. It's coming from other places, and they, you know, they can't stop what's coming from south of us. But all the way down through that area, a culvert up by my house, it goes over the road, and it's swirling in there. They're taking as much as they can. And then down on the other end, there's two culverts, too. They're taking as much as they can, and there's a manhole that, when I stand down by it, it's as tall as me, right by that road, and it was over top of that the other day when it went across the road on the north side. And it's just, there's so much water volume coming from all the other neighborhoods into our area there that it's not... that it has not been taken care of. It can now handle anymore because we're even getting it off the farm fields to the west, too, and it's blowing those guys that live to the west out. I know there's a lady here that her husband said he thought their swimming pool broke the other night when the water all of a sudden come down through their yard.
I'll just try and address that real quick. So if the water's coming from two directions, and we're not disagreeing that it might be, all we can do is control the water that's coming from our direction, and to the extent that we can retain that and lessen how it's released, I mean, that'll be a positive impact, not a negative impact.
Steve Widener, and I'm an attorney representing these many lot owners in Summerland Park. And I think what these people are really asking for is some time to see the many, many problems that they see resolved before some additional development is approved. If you look at the history of this division, it has really... it's not been a very admirable experience. The first deed of dedication was approved in 2006. If you examine it, I think you can see in itself that it has some problems. And immediately then, before any lots were sold, an amended deed of dedication was filed and accepted, and it... both of them provided for a homeowners association. There have been several developers passing through control of this thing. Several of them failed, and a bank owned it for a while, and then it was the current developers or Iowa Development. And to my knowledge, they've divested themselves of all of the lots, but still have developer rights and responsibilities. And there is a... there are just too many questions about who is responsible for what we have now, and also what is the right way to correct all of it. The homeowners association that was set up by the original developers was put into place, and it was administratively dissolved because the developers failed to file the biennial reports. It still exists but can't do anything because of its current status, and we're looking into getting that reinstated, and it should not be a problem to do that. The deed of dedications that I've talked about are the only instrument of conveyance of the common areas, tracks A, B, C and D, to the homeowners association. The original deed of dedication dealt with all four of them. The amended deed of dedication, which says that it replaces, I can't remember the exact word, but it connotes to replaces the amended one. And so there is no conveyance in the amended deed of dedication of anything but one of the tracks. So there is an issue about ownership and who's... who owns the ground on which these problems exist, the various tracks. So it's a mess, and there are a lot of responsibilities for the mess. And I'm not going to name names here, but the question is, should we ever be in this place in the first place, in this position? So these people are just asking for time to make sure that they can bring together everything they can to improve their situation before new development occurs, and they want to wait until they get that preliminary stuff done before they even think about facing what somebody might be putting in place. So I think what they're asking for, at least, is tabling this again on all of these matters, but tabling these again so that... these matters, but tabling these again, so that they can sort out these problems now that they have legal help and cooperation and so on, and get that done first. That's their request.
Anybody else like to speak to?
I just want to address that real quick. If the project's tabled, we can't proceed with addressing any stormwater issues on this site. That's the one thing we need, is we need a site plan approved, so we can start designing stormwater control for this parcel. We can't come in and address all of Summerland's issues that they have regarding stormwater, but we'd certainly like to come in and try and address any stormwater issues from this property that may be contributing to that. But we can't do that until we have an approved site plan. Thank you.
Carla Brown, 5565 Summerland Drive. And I would like to ask the engineer, I heard a rumor today that in Track B, the proposed road that's going to go through there, that the developer wants our homeowners association to pay for that road. Is that true?
No, no. Mr. Dollstrom would pay for the improvements to put it in, but then it would fall under the jurisdiction of a homeowners association to maintain it. Okay?
Because I think one thing that we're hearing again at this meeting is that we have really been burned many times in many ways in the past, and I've only lived there for five years now. But what I hear you saying is, approve it, trust us, but I think the more that the developer can try to, I mean, I live in Lot 18, and so I am hopeful that if you cut that hill down behind me, it might solve some of the water issues in my backyard. But I think as much good effort as you can put in to work with us, rather than expecting us to, again, carry more of the burden, we would be less opposed to that. So again, I would second that we need more time. All right.
So as far as Track B, Track B is that stub that was always reserved and preserved for a road to cut through. It's owned by the homeowners association now. Brent has agreed that the road that was, would go on there, he would pay for the road. If they, I mean, if they own the tract, I mean, then they would be responsible for maintaining it. If they want to convey that Track B to the applicant here, he would take over maintaining that moving forward. So I mean, that was just something we talked about a minute or two before the hearing. But I mean, he's glad to do that, if you want to make that a condition, that...
The reason it's there, Eric, is because fires requested it, correct?
Because fires requesting it.
For...
And he's going to pay to put it in, but it's on land that's owned by the homeowners association. If they don't own that little strip tract, convey it to him, and he'll take care of responsibility of maintenance moving forward, and it will come off the homeowners association's responsibilities.
Is it required by fire for the duplexes or for Summerland?
It's for Summerland, for Summerland.
Summerland.
It's a second exit for the Summerland development.
Is there two different homeowners associations we're talking about? I mean, will this new development be its own homeowners association, the 10 units?
Yeah. I mean, they're not, this development, now, you know, there's different things on tonight's agenda, but this, these duplexes, that's outside of all of Summerland, and that's not part of the homeowners association. I don't believe that was the intent, that that was part of it, wasn't part of it. But the other developments that we're going to talk about later will all be part of homeowners association, and all owners would be members of the homeowners association.
When did that track have to become part of Summerland Park, that 2.7 acres?
It's never been part of Summerland Park.
It was auctioned off by the bank. It was listed as parcel A, B, and C.
Tim Schmitz, 5611 Summerland. I was at the auction when the community bank tried to auction off the sections. And at that time, there was parcel A, B, and C, and they were all under the Summerland Park sale. So they, it was, you could buy that 2.7 acres as one part, you could buy three parcels, each and every one separately or together. So this is where I guess I'm kind of confused as to, they call it Summerland Park South condos, but it's not part of Summerland. So I guess I'm kind of confused there.
So I'll try and address that as best I can. My guess is you had Summerland Park, which was the land to the east, was sort of how that was developed. And then there was Summerland Park First, which was sort of the land to the west. And then this, this triangle there was never part of those platted land. I'm assuming the bank took back everything that was owned by the second developer in line at that point in time. When they sold it, you know, they just used the common vernacular, probably called, you know, the first Summerland, Track A, Track B, and Track C, and like a lot of auctions, you know, they try and sell them. Hey, you can have A, you can have B, or if you want to pay us enough, you can have A, B. So, I mean, the common language they used didn't make it, was never part of the Summerland Park or the Summerland. So those first two, those are always clearly part of the plats of Summerland Park, and there's one homeowners association for them, but this was never included as, as part of that.
Why would it not? I mean, they're going to need, in other words, so then, that, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious as to who's going to be maintaining it, except for the fact, obviously, you're going to be maintaining the roads.
Yeah. Well, he's saying he'll maintain the road, but their access will be directly off Dizer. Most of them won't, I mean, I mean, they'll come off Dizer, and they won't be part of your road, or, I mean, they'll be separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
Hi, this is Stephanie Brusker, and I live at 5515-5519, Summerland Drive. I'm just curious in regards to what his attorney had stated, that the road is part of Summerland. It's owned by the homeowners. How can they say what happens on our land, especially without the homeowner's approval? Just a question. I'm no attorney. I don't know the answer, but I'm just posing that as a thought for your head.
As far as the access road coming through?
Yeah, yep. If it's owned by the homeowners, how, how, how can it be dedicated as a road?
The fire and rescue is requiring the access point through there, and as Eric addressed, Mr. Dollstrom would be willing to convey that, or be willing to accept the conveyance of that back over to him from the homeowner. So they're basically taking the responsibility of that off of the homeowners association.
Okay, but it's my understanding that the road has to go in for his condos. I know this isn't about condos, but from everything that I read, is the condos require that road.
It stops at Summerland Park. Summerland Development requires that access for fire to get out, a second way out or in.
That's my question.
Why wasn't that addressed a long time ago, then?
This is the first time we've seen a development on that corner for something to come out there.
But I guess...
Correct, basically.
Understandings have changed.
Fire code now requires two exits out, with any subdivision that has 30 lots or more. So technically...
This should have been done a long time ago.
Correct. But unfortunately, the city can't come in and tell you, hey, you need to put a road in. What their city's doing is to allow a second development that isn't part of Summerland, even though it has Summername. They're requesting the developers to pay for those public improvements that are outside the boundaries of this property to get this site approved. So they're actually stepping up, he's stepping up, you're putting your improvements of that road, which is deeded, you know, are in your deed of dedication, that that's designated to be an extension of Summerland Drive. He's often putting those improvements for you. One, for your benefit, to be fire code, with the requirement that you have more than 30 lots, you have to have, excuse me, two, two exits or entrances, and then that allows this property also.
So what you're saying is, had this not been brought to their attention, we would have never had a second exit, more or less?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
Well, it's there as a proposed second exit.
Few more comments, and we'll, for the sake of time, in the agenda.
Josh Meyer, 5846 Summerland Drive. This just goes into those five duplexes, right? This road doesn't service the rest of the neighborhood that we have over 30 lots, right? So, I mean, really, how's that helping us with a second exit to our neighborhood?
It's for fire access.
Fire for those five buildings, not for anything else.
Fire access for your whole section.
So where's the road go to meet up? Oh, I see it.
It comes into Summerland Drive.
Oh, Track B, that's required by the fire.
It's so if the initial, the other entrance gets blocked somehow, but I have something much like...
So I think there's a couple of things that can kind of be argued. I think, you know, number one, you know, we had already talked about how in the last document, you guys said that it was to serve the duplexes. I think number two, you guys are saying that, you know, Track B, the homeowners own it, and so the homeowners would have to vote and approve it. So I mean, I think this just goes back to the entire convoluted thing, which we really need time to be able to sort out. You know, you're saying the homeowners own it, you say it's Track B, according to those rules, then the homeowners would have to vote, approve it, the whole nine yards. And we can argue that you guys approved the subdivision, you approved the planning and zoning, and there wasn't a second road required at that time. So really, we're grandfathered in, and the city can't come and tell us now that we have to add a second road, which is, I think, what I just kind of, sort of, heard. So again, you know, that's kind of where we stand on the entire road issue. It's, if it's at Track B, which it clearly is Track B, then it's owned by the homeowners, and we've really got to kind of clean up this entire mess to figure out, you know, the path that we can go down and what we really need to do about it.
Brent Dollstrom, 3538 Augusta Circle, Waterloo, Iowa. So we've been back and forth with the fire department and the city for a couple of months on this design. And the original design, and my hope all along, was to never actually bring a road into Summerland for much of the reasons that everyone's talking about tonight. I just don't want to be a nuisance from this parcel. The fire department has asked, and basically demanded that Summerland get the second one. And so although if the residents are concerned about traffic, it's actually, there'll be signs posted, and it's not for traffic, it's for a fire truck only. It's only to be used in emergencies. That will be posted, that, it is not for traffic. And that, in, in the fire department, that's what they've asked for. And so if it's traffic they're worried about, that's not, it won't happen. It's not, there should be zero traffic on this road unless there is a fire. And so really, the way I see it is, it's a major benefit for Summerland itself, just in case someone would, it'd be a terrible incident if there would be a fire, but at least then there would have two exits in case one of them would get blocked. Thank you.
Darian Everything again, 5649 Summerland. I'd simply like to restate that while not necessarily all of us are opposed to the condos, we are just asking for time. We are truly hoping to have our homeowners association really up to par, organized by the end of August, early August or so. But even so, we're just being offered, well, you can give up this tract of land, and we'll maintain it, we'll take care of it, which is great. But we need time to consider that. We need time to consider, okay, if we have this road coming in, we do need to take care of snow removal. We need to make sure that if the signs are posted, how are we going to make sure that people understand that it is only from our end, too, not just yours, from our end, that it's for emergency use only? We just need the time to consider that. And dropping it on us, hey, you can, you can pass it over, I don't personally think that's fair. And especially if we were to try and move forward with that today, we don't have time as homeowners to meet and organize and vote on that, as the city would like us to do as a private homeowner subdivision. So again, we're just asking for time. We're not necessarily asking to say, hey, no, absolutely not. But give us the time to reason it through in an appropriate manner, much as you do, much as you reason through to make sure your decisions are made thoroughly. Thank you.
That's coming from Steve.
Just very quickly, the application to, for reinstatement of the homeowners association is being developed right now. The, we're trying to arrange a special meeting of the members of the homeowners association in order to get the votes, to get directors and officers, which was never done by the developers, and they were in control of the homeowners association. So it'll take approximately 30 days, I would imagine, to set the meeting up, get the proper notice out, get it together. And then as soon as that vote is taken, and we have authorized people, the application for reinstatement will be filed immediately. And the Secretary of State checks with the Iowa Department of Revenue to make sure there are no taxes, and it's done. So they should be able to get that together in that period of time. It's not like something that's way out there.
Carla Brown, 5565 Summerland Drive. I'm not sure how exactly you can police everyone's use or non-use of that road, particularly kids in the neighborhood. So one thing that our homeowners association will be paying for are our common areas, which include a couple of ponds. I'm sure that some of the residents of these duplexes or twin homes will use that road to bicycle, will come down and play in our neighborhood. So again, we will be paying for common areas, and we will have no way to be sure that the only ones accessing our common areas through that road, you know, are part of that. So again, they may benefit, but we will have no way to enforce that kind of separation that you're assuring us will be there.
This is Hall, I'd like to make a motion to, a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Moving to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing's closed. Bring to the commission for discussion.
This is Morrison. I have a couple of questions. If it's okay to address Kyle directly, is that okay? I'm an accountant, not an engineer, so I need a translation. Looking at this drawing, which on our packet is 21, I'm looking at the hammerhead, and I see Track C. Then looking at this aerial photo, I see the area marked off where the development is. Is Track C what's going to run into this area? Is it going to run, so it's going to run across?
Track C is kind of a strip 40 to 50 feet wide that runs east and west. And then it, it's supposed to dump into a drainage easement that then runs northwesterly. You can see on your area where the drainage actually goes.
So it goes across and then...
Right, correct.
Okay. And then I had one more question, if you guys don't mind me hogging the time, for the attorney, Steve. You talked about a 30-day timeframe to get the homeowners association up and running. Is the amount of time that they're asking for 30 days?
I'd like to say yes. The, the meeting requires 10 to 50 days' notice, and they're in the process right now of putting the notice together for the members, and they have everybody identified, including Mr. Dollstrom, or his, one of his companies. And so that notice, I would think, could go out in the next 10 days. The meeting would be scheduled, I assume, later in July. Is that fair or not?
I mean, that's just, I mean, that's not going to be able to do something with that. I mean, 30 days is, I mean, that's not really realistic time for you to be able to do that on. I mean, 30 days, you're not always voted for, but then you need to be able to, you know, hold your...
I was talking about getting the homeowners association reinstated. I think what Karen is referring to would be action then by those directors and officers and members to do whatever else has to be done. I'm just talking about getting the homeowners association up so they can do anything. So it's probably more than 30 days for everything to happen.
Are they still going to have to create bylaws? Do they already have bylaws?
Bylaws are created, and if they don't, that's one thing that was done.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Steve, sorry to jump in here. So are you looking for 60 days? Are you looking for, what do you, I guess, what, what rough timeframe are you guys looking for? I understand it's 30 days to reestablish the homeowners association, but beyond that, to... to, uh, you know, there's, there's conversation about the conveyance, all of that. I guess what is your guys' request when you're saying you need more time? What is the time that you need?
Please come to the microphone.
We plan to establish a homeowner association. We're going to have to collect money from people, obviously quite a bit of money, to fix our problems. So, you're going to have to give us time to get our money, get the problem fixed, before any more can be approved. That way we can solve our problems before we have bigger problems. That's kind of what we're asking for, and I wish I could give you a definite timeline, and I wish I could say that every homeowner's going to have the thousand dollars to buck up immediately, but honestly, I mean, would you have a thousand dollars tomorrow if I come to you and ask for that? That, that's just, I'm thinking about everybody in the neighborhood.
So that, so then to be clear, we're being asked effectively to table this indefinitely?
Well, until we can get our problem solved, which we have it on our agenda, but as Steve can say, we need time. I'm Dave.
Sorry.
It's Karen again. You know, we don't want this to continue any longer. I mean, you know, we had asked, um, Jason Guthrie to turn over the, the property to us a long time ago, and, you know, he wouldn't. So we want this problem solved just as quickly as you guys do. We are seriously hoping that within sixty to ninety days, we're going to have a really good handle on, you know, number one, getting some people in and starting to take care of the, um, entire world drainage system. Um, we're going to be talking to the state about some of the issues from when the IDED project came in and a few other things. Um, the city needs to come out and address the storm sewer, where we have actual sewage bubbling up into the subdivision. So, I mean, I think it's going to take all of us really working together. The homeowners are committed, um, we have been working very hard. You know, this is not our full-time job. I mean, if we had, you know, forty hours a week just to spend on this, then it would be great. But, you know, we have had meetings at my house two nights a week for the past, you know, four to five weeks. Um, you know, we've been trying to get so many answers, and every single time we ask a question, we come up against a brick wall, because as Steve has mentioned, this is extremely, extremely convoluted. I, there are abstracts and titles, there are three of us. Stephanie has an abstract and a title from?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten. My abstract and title is from two thousand and eight, and Bob's title is from two thousand and twelve, and all three abstracts and titles are totally and completely different. Explain that to me. It's, I mean, explain that to me, and they all came from Black Hawk abstract and title. This is what we purchased our homes on. I purchased a quarter of a million-dollar home based on that abstract and that title, and what it says in it for the deed of dedication, and what I understood I was purchasing into. Now there's three and four different abstracts and titles. I mean, I, I, I'm not really sure I can convey how big of a mess this is. It's not just an issue of not having the homeowners association, or, you know, that Jason wouldn't hand it over, or now that we have great big huge water problems. Uh, it goes much deeper than that, and we are working as hard as we can, we have retained counsel, um, to just not have people stand up here and say, well, you should do this, and then have them turn around and walk away, and we're left with even a bigger problem than what we have right now. We're trying to really have information to be able to make informed decisions and to really bring Summerland Park back to what it should be, because over the past five or six years, it has really deteriorated immensely to land us in the problems that we have. We agree a hundred percent. Brent's not, Brent's not.
No, sorry, Eric.
Brent's not responsible.
Ma'am, if I could, that you've answered the question of how much time was needed.
Sorry, I do have one more follow-up question.
Or?
Uh, either for Eric, or for Mr. Johnson, or for, or for the developer. They've thrown out, I guess, one, are there any incentives in this that, that make it time-sensitive? And, uh, I guess a follow-up question is, sort of, what is the tipping point, I know, for, for this project to go forward? Time-wise?
I think the answer as far as time is, we live in Iowa, and the, uh, weather is unpredictable, and so last year we had a pretty short construction season, and I think myself and the fire department are both excited to get that second exit, and, and so we were hoping to do it this year. And so you can only pave till, uh, October, sometimes November, and to get that, then if you had to get the construction plans in and get everything set up, that's usually another sixty to ninety days. If they're asking for sixty days of no construction, I think that'd be a guarantee. It takes longer than that to get through all the channels that are necessary, and so I don't think you'd see construction for sixty-nine days, but we're, we'd be excited to get it done by the end of the year, and so that'd mean your pavement would have to be in in October. I don't think you want to challenge November with Iowa anymore.
Since Brent, since we're just looking at, um, approving the site plan, how much would you be able to get accomplished if you had that approval at this time?
Uh, well, you'd be able to get everything, I mean, that gets every ball rolling, so then that gets, that just starts going in through the, you have to get construction plans designed for the private road, uh, you'd have to get the detention plans approved for the area, and so those take time, and that's what, that's what we're asking for tonight. So that would bring us through, to give us another sixty to ninety days of work before we could actually then proceed forward with the project itself.
You're not going to actually be building the road or building the duplexes, you're just going to be doing all the infrastructure stuff that need, or planning and, and preparation stuff that needs to be done.
Yeah, and I think maybe even someone like Noel could speak more on that, but there's a lot of steps still at hand before development would happen. Now, as soon as I can get through all those hoops, and yeah, that, the process would be then to go on to construction, but maybe Noel can speak on it, there's still a long ways to go before construction, even after today's meeting.
Yeah, and I know Eric Dorson's here too about the road, uh, sections, you know, if, if you were to recommend approval today, it still has to go to council, um, which is probably three to four weeks out. If the council does not approve it all in one reading, it could be about seven weeks out, um, from approval, just from the council's standpoint. Um, if, uh, obviously they're waiting for the site plan approval fully through the process before they start actually working on some of the more detailed plans, then the stormwater sections, the road sections all have to go, that to be designed by them, then turned into engineering. Engineering will review all the calculations, um, to make sure that they agree with them to meet city code, um, and then the permit process, obviously they'll need to turn in building plans and all that to the building department. So there's, there's quite a few steps to go through before actual dirt turns out there.
Noel, and will any of that come back to us? Let's say we were to approve the site plan, would any of those come back before us, so that if some of those concerns weren't addressed, we would have some?
Um, no, they would not.
Buckles, uh, one question I have is on this access road. You put an impervious, uh, surface in there, that's where the water's going to go. And if you look at this road, that water's going to run right down that road, right into those houses at the bottom of the hill, and...
Can I question to that, really? I got a diagram that shows that, actually. Cause I, cause I think you, I think that's the, this isn't open, so I'd be really quick, but right now, the, the water does pour off the hill, and so what you're saying is happening right now, the water's going to go there, and so the road, I mean, so what Kyle's designing is the water to go to the detention pond, and so what you're saying is all this water's going to dump down there, that's not true, the, the, and the engineers will have to approve our site plan, but the water will actually flow to the detention and not down the road. That's what's happening right now.
This is Tack, and so if I understand correctly, if you get the site amendment, I have, I have a lot of questions. I understand what you're saying. I think whatever has happened needs to be fixed. I also understand, as a developer, I worked for one, my brother's an architect, I understand it takes a lot of channels, and every month you wait has set you back, and I, and I understand that too. But I think there's a lot of things going on here, and I think that you unfortunately are in a very bad situation, and I'm wondering if there's anything with, if we prove the site plan amendment, and I think we've talked a couple times in the hallway, um, afterwards, or, uh, and before, um, if you put in that road, if my understanding correctly, per the international fire, fire code and the fire marshal, that road has to be approved so that, that drainage has to go towards that pond, I mean, that's a requirement, and that if I'm understanding what you're saying, it will help ease some of the water that's flowing down. So if we get the site plan amendment, um, during the works, will you be working with the homeowners as they are trying to get their association? I mean, will there be dialogue? I mean, I know that's outside of our scope, but that's a concern I have when I'm looking at the vote. I just want to see that we don't make anything worse, and if there's a possibility to ease some of the burden they're having with water, I know, I would feel better with my vote if I'm going to approve something like this, because I'm, I'm, be honest, I'm hesitant, because I understand you don't want to make things worse, but there's any way we can get something fixed while they're still taking care of the other issues, because the original owner of that property, I believe, should be responsible. They built it, they need to take care of it, I mean, that's just, to me, common sense, but that's separate from what you're asking. So I think what I'm hearing is a lot of emotion, and rightfully so, but we've got a site plan here, and I'm wondering if we prove it, I would feel comfortable knowing that it's not only it works, but there's some guarantee, and with an RP zoning, would you also have to keep in constant dialogue if they go to, before the council or anything? Would these homeowners be sure that there are always, you know, somehow in the mix involved since you're going to be neighbors, whoever comes into your development, that there is still some, I think they would appreciate some assurance that somebody is at least caring and making sure we don't have another disaster like they've gone through? Does that all make sense?
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me, and I, I think they would, uh, attest to any email or meeting that's been requested of me. I've, you know, I've been to every single one, and, and, and I understand there are numerous, and I'm very happy to answer any and all questions, I have done so too today. And as far as the stormwater concerns on this parcel, those are the ones I can take care of here, and, and I think city engineering could, uh, to address that, because I'll have to work with them as far as that goes. With the rest of Summerland issues that they have, I, I am now, as of this month, the, the largest homeowner out there. So, all the issues that they have, think of it times fifty, because that's, that's my burden, and, uh, and, and I'm willing to help on my percentage of the, the homeownership, which is, you know, as we go down the road, it'd be almost fifty percent of this neighborhood.
Will you be joining the homeowners association until those things, so, so you will be actively involved as a member and, and somehow work together and?
I've been at, uh, yeah, every meeting that's been requested, I've, me, I've been at.
Can we see the two drawings you were holding up?
Any other discussion except for looking at the drainage from the commission? This is Whitehead, and like last month, I will be abstaining from all the Summerland agenda items.
I have a question for the, um, staff. Hypothetically, nothing happens, the site plan, are the homeowners still technically have to put in that road, or is that because that was grandfathered in that? I'm just curious how that came to be. Is it because it was a latter change in the law that they could build fifty homes and not require the road?
In, in two thousand and twelve, the fire code was changed, uh, to require two access points, um, for anything over thirty homes in a subdivision. I don't have the documents in front of me, my assumption is Track B obviously was platted, um, it shows up as right-of-way with their road section, it was platted to be, um, as part of their dedication for road purposes. Without having the documents to read right in front of me, and I don't know the fire code, um, I would assume that we could make them put the road in based on the new fire code if we had to. I'm not threatening or anything, I'm just telling you that it, it was put there for road purposes, and so I'm, I'm assuming at some point there was some wording in there. Um, generally there is for public roads, that's why I'm not sure about this being a private road, um, but normally we have wording in there saying that if they do not build the road as it was designed, the city has the ability to go in and put the road and assess it back to them or force them to put the road in.
And this is Mike Young, just as we're sitting here thinking about it, for everybody here, I sympathize with the water problems, the issues that we've got. We've got quite a knot here, and the thing I've been thinking about, even looked at, looked it up, um, with the homeowners association to see if anything had been set up here a couple of days ago, because I've been thinking about this, how do we untie the knot? And it sounds like with this particular site plan, for this part of the property, it, it does seem to make more sense to me, um, for the developer to develop it, and, and what we've got here without adding the, um, the additional, I guess, restrictions on this property. Now, I, I think the other requests that are on our agenda today are a little bit different, and I've thought of those differently as well. But if you live in Summerland right now, it sounds like there are pretty bad problems, and I, I saw that, the pictures that you showed, they're there whether this is developed or not, um, and I think it's incumbent on everybody to try to get together, figure out the homeowners association, and then figure out the common areas and work with those, but at the same time, doing nothing right now doesn't seem to be working either. It hasn't worked for however long it's been with Jason Guthrie, um, and it's, it puts everybody in kind of a tough spot, because I think generally, if there's a good plan for new houses and expanding the tax base, um, I think that's good, and I'm supportive of that. With that said, it doesn't sound like there's quite as much opposition necessarily just to development here. It's, what I've heard and what I've seen more, it's about water and the water problems that are there existing, as it relates to this request, A1. And so because of that, I, I'm inclined to approve the site plan amendment for this request with the understanding it's going to take at least sixty to ninety days to get moving, and that time, I think it's important for everybody to keep working on those common areas and improve those for the water problems that are existing right now, um, but also to stay vigilant with the city council and with the city and everybody else as the, um, developer comes up with the plans for the water retention.
Was that a motion, Mike?
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, um, subject to the condition as noted.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to the one staff condition. Any further discussion before we vote? See, none, we'll do a roll call vote. Tackett?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
Gufsterson?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead? Abstain. That request is approved, seven to one, and we'll go on to council?
Yes.
Thanks. Brings us to our next agenda item, which is another hearing, another site plan amendment. Time's now five oh five. And hearing scheduled at this time, this request by Brent Dolestrom for a site plan amendment in the R3 RP Plan Multiple Family Residence District to allow for the construction of two new twelveplexes located north of fifty-seven forty-three Summerland Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photos, drawings, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on June nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen." Do we have a motion received? Motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. For those who wish to speak for or against this request, we'd ask that you please come to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address. Members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphone. Staff report?
Just real quick, before Tim starts, remember there is a new site plan that was handed out to you for this one.
Go ahead, Tim, sorry.
Uh, applicant is requesting to construct two twelve-unit residential buildings. Request to construct the new buildings could have a negative impact upon the surrounding area, as the surrounding area is comprised of predominantly single-family and two-family dwellings. Though the land is zoned for multifamily use, some question has been raised as to what type and design of multifamily use would be compatible. All open parking areas containing more than four parking spaces shall be effectively screened as defined by the zoning ordinance on each side adjoining property situated in a residence district or any institutional premises by a wall or densely planted compact hedge. Would appear from the site plan that parking areas are close to existing single-family development to the south of the site. Applicant has submitted a landscaping plan which shows a forty-foot buffer park along the Southersley property line, which a lot, with a large number of trees planted in this buffer to screen the two buildings and parking areas from the... screen the two buildings and parking areas from the single-family residences to the south. On the western portion of Lot 76, the current property owner dug a drainage ditch that allows water from the south to flow northward and to the east in the existing drainage channel east of the site in question. On the submitted site plan, the applicant is showing three six-stall detached garages set back 5.1 feet from the west property line, which would appear to encroach into established drainage ditch. Another six-unit garage is shown north of the parking area. Applicant's engineer has submitted a revised plan that shows a drainage swale along the south property line to direct the drainage to the south ditch along Summerland Drive that will be regraded and then into the drainage channel. It will be necessary that a stormwater detention plan is submitted as well as a stormwater pollution prevention plan to the engineering department for review and approval. On the far eastern portion of the property in question, areas are located within the Zone A 100-year flood plain. The areas where the new buildings would be constructed are not located within a special flood hazard area. Future land use map design dates this area as low-density residential. Proposed 12-unit buildings would represent 8.9 units per acre. The comprehensive plan defines low density as less than or equal to six units per acre. As a master plan for the entire Summerland Park area, the entire subdivision is closer to three units per acre. That's including the 12-unit buildings. When considered a planned residence district as it was approved, the proposed site plan amendment would appear to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. As noted, the applicant is requesting to construct two 12-unit residential buildings located on the northwest side of Summerland Farms Development, which is located near the intersection of Dysert Road and East Orange Road. The original site plan that was approved for this particular area of the Summerland Development was labeled for mixed use, including multifamily use. However, no site plan or any details were indicated of what type of development would be located in this particular area of the subdivision. Thus, this is the reason this particular request needs to go through the major amendment review process. Proposed structures would be three stories in height, which is the maximum height allowed in the underlying zoning district, which is the R3. Due to this being zoned RP, there can be some slight variations. There are 24 parking spaces located outside the proposed buildings and there are four six-stall garages proposed along the west property line. For a residential dwelling, two parking spaces for each dwelling unit are required and a maximum of 50% of the parking spaces required may be represented by garage spaces. There are 48 parking stalls needed for the development, which are being provided. Lot is 2.69 acres in size and based on the density requirements for the R3 zoning district, there shall be a minimum of 2,500 square feet per family. The applicant in this particular instance has the ability to construct up to 58 units upon this site. However, only 24 units are being proposed for the new development. Staff has some concerns on compatibility of the proposed development as the surrounding area is comprised of single-family, two-family development. Would appear appropriate for the lot to be used for multifamily development. However, what type and design of multifamily would be compatible with this area has been questioned. Staff does have some concerns. If the three-story design next to the single-family homes will be compatible, such a larger height can be imposing upon the single-family homes. Applicant has proposed to mitigate or lessen the intrusion of the multifamily designs on the single-family homes in existence through a landscaping plan and increased setback. The zoning ordinance requires buffering of parking lots next to residential units. The zoning ordinance definition of a buffer park would be 40 feet in width with the predominant planting of evergreen-type trees, shrubs, plants, so as to assure year-round effectiveness and the density and height of the plantings shall be adequate to serve as an effective visual screen. As noted, the applicant has submitted a revised plan that includes such a buffer park. Fire marshals indicated that due to the proposed buildings being, being over 30 feet in height, the fire code requires access to at least one side of the building, which the access needs to be a minimum of 15 feet away from the building and no further than 30 feet. Also, no parking, fire lane signs would be required. It is staff's recommendation that the request for site plan amendment to the R3 RP Plan Multiple Residence District be approved as submitted for the following reasons. Request is within the density requirements for the zoning district and the overall development plan is well within the density requirements for low density as provided in the comprehensive plan. The area is zoned for multifamily residential development. The applicant is providing a 40-foot buffer park along the south property line with landscaping to screen the 12-plexes and parking areas from the neighboring single-family houses to the south and the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon traffic conditions in the area, with the two conditions that the final site plan meet all city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, and two, that a second access point is constructed into the subdivision as required by the fire code.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett. I have a question and it might be one for, for Brent, but I'm looking at the packet. I know for zoning purposes, it says it's a multiple residence, 12-unit residential building. And when I'm looking at this part, I'm a little confused on, are these condos or apartments? Because condominiums are purchased. They have the tax benefits of homeownership with the upkeep of a homeowners association, but they're like an apartment. It's calling the both, you know, the best of both worlds, my understanding, but I'm looking at, and we're looking at renting. So are these condominiums or are these apartments?
That's probably something the applicant didn't address.
Okay, I'm a little unclear on that.
They will be condominiums.
Okay.
Yeah. Whether they're all sold or rented depends on what the market will bear, but, you know, if, if there's interest in buying them, they will be sold. If not, then they will be leased, but they will each be an individual unit and meet all the laws of condominiums that they need to meet.
Okay. I didn't know they could do that in Iowa. I was wondering. Thanks, Eric.
Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the site plan amendment? I know we have a lot of the same topics from the first one, so we'll keep the, those comments to minimal.
Yep. So I have a question in the packet relative to the comprehensive land use. The part that staff read, this is low-density residential, the future land use map designates this area as such. So with the proposed 12-plex representing 8.92 units per acre, the comprehensive plan defines low density as less than or equal to six units per acre. I guess I'm curious as to how we're changing that definition from each lot to the subdivision as a whole while I'm a math person, I'm a science person, averages are great, and it would seem to say that we could then put a skyscraper in a subdivision, average it out with enough empty lots and call it a low-density area. So I guess I'm curious as to why that definition is being applied instead of to the lot that we're discussing and to the plan that we're discussing instead of to the, the subdivision as a whole, which I feel isn't relevant.
I'm gonna let staff answer that. Can I get your name and address again though?
Yep. Darian Everding, 5649 Summerland Drive.
Thanks.
Or maybe you don't have an answer, which I think might be more telling.
I'm not sure I understand the question. I guess you're, you're asking about the, the density requirements that we stated?
Right. And why those requirements are instead of being placed on the site plan, but instead of placing them specifically on the site plan, which would violate those requirements at 8.92, you're then saying, no, it averages out fine. So it averages out to like three, we're cool. Why are you making that requirement to the subdivision and not the site plan that we're looking at?
Where was the 8.92 at?
8.32.
Okay, sorry. I looked at the later one.
Under relationship to comprehensive land use.
I would, I would note, that's, that's a good point. It represents 8.92 units per acre. The comprehensive plan calls low-density residential as six units per acre. One thing about the zoning in general, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map are always a guide to development. This is shown as a low-density residential area for the entire 40-acre tract. When the city council, back in, I'm not sure the exact date of when it was rezoned for the site plan amendment, they did rezon portions of this to multifamily residential. So instead of going back and trying to amend the future land use map for small areas, we go by, obviously the zoning dictates that more strictly than the future land use map. So it was shown this particular corner and I, it's in here on page, I think go back to the other one. The original site plan was in here on page 22 where they showed this as a mixed-use area. I don't see a date on there, but back when that was approved, oh, 2003. So this is definitely, and it was rezoned to R3 RP, so the R3 allows for a little bit higher density residential. So we think the, oh, the 8.92 is very close to the six units per acre, probably closer to low-density residential than standard high-density residential anyway.
So I guess my other concern with that, we're looking at 8.92 and an average works as it brings the most up, but we're bringing our average down to three. So we're bringing 8.92, almost nine, down to three. That means the standard in the subdivision, I'd love to see the median if someone has it, but that means that the standard in the subdivision is much, much, much lower than 8.92. So we're not following in character anymore as well, which I know is a concern that staff mentioned. So I, I question the idea that 8.92 is reasonably close to six. That's 150%. So I, I very much question that math, but thank you.
Sure. Anybody else like to speak to the site plan amendment request?
Carla Brown, 5565 Summerland Drive. I am very concerned if these are not going to be purchased but will be rental units. I think that, that doesn't fit with being part of the neighborhood at all and I would reiterate my concerns that we have no way of keeping those people from using the common areas that then the rest of us will be paying for.
Hey, if I may, Ms. Brown, this would actually be part of Summerland Development and Mr. Dollstrom would belong to the homeowners association.
So for each of the families living in these units, they would be paying into, they would be part of our homeowners association.
Either they would, either they would or Mr. Dollstrom would, yes.
There's 24 units, there should be 24 new members, each would pay an equal share in the homeowners association.
And if they were rentals, then Mr. Dollstrom would be having that many votes then in the homeowners association as well?
Yes. Not sure how the bylaws read, but yes, more than likely.
The other concern I have with rentals is I think we all know that if you own something, you care for it in a way that you don't. If it, so I think it does change the character of the neighborhood.
Brad Wells, 5553 Summerland Drive. Some of the concerns that I have with this, just an opinion first of all, is our subdivision, we don't have any sidewalks. So in our family, when we go for walks, when we take our kids for a bike ride, we're on the street. 24 units, 24 homes to go on a single lot is going to increase traffic a lot from our entrance just on that north part of our subdivision. So that, that's just an opinion. Some other facts where I think these condos don't fit our area at all is in our deed of dedications. We talked earlier about our homeowners association, 30 to 90 days from getting up and going. The deed of dedication that, that we'll be operating with, there's a few points in there. First of all, vehicle storage must be in a permanent garage. It's point number 10 in our deed of dedication. And I believe the city paperwork you have in front of you has the city staff recommendations, calls the parking lot a commercial-type parking lot. It's, that's the cause for the buffer park that got added, but there's not supposed to be even a driveway in our subdivision that has a car parked outside of a garage for a long-term parking. Everything's supposed to be inside. If you're outside of your garage, it's supposed to be temporary where it's less than a week. Also, the deed of dedications, number 15 and 16, talks about all persons and corporations enquiring in Summerland shall be taken and held to uphold the subdivision covenants, restrictions, and stipulations. Now, I think a lot of this has to do with just the look being similar to what Summerland is and I think many of you are familiar with it now as we've gone through this the last few months. Single-family homes, twin homes that are single-family homes, it's not really something that is ready, is ready to have condos come in. There was a plan for condos to go in a different part, what we had just talked about, that southeast corner just off Dysert Road, and the request to construct the new buildings, this was the request for denial from, from city staff, said would have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. Said the area is primarily comprised of single-family and two-family dwellings with the exception of the mobile, mobile park home just east of Dysert Road. There's no other multifamily developments that are in the surrounding area. The future land use map designates this area as, as low-density residential. Also in that denial, it talked about, based on past approvals, the entire site development plus the existing structures in close proximity would appear this request would not positively enhance the existing neighborhood, nor would it work to improve future housing expansions in this area. The city of Waterloo wants to see more residential development within the community, but not at the expense of existing neighborhoods. I believe this is applicable on this request as well. Thank you.
Darian Everding, 5649 Summerland Drive. I'd like to follow up on this. On page 78 in the packet, I guess I'd like some understanding of what this means and especially point 2B. It reads, "Item 3 said the deed of dedication, or in the said deed of dedication, calls for no residential dwelling shall be erected on any lot unless design and location is harmony with existing structures. This document supersedes said requirement." I guess I'd like understanding of what that means. Is this saying that we, we don't really, like if we approve things here or what, what does this document mean and how would it, you know, preclude, I guess, our deed of dedication?
This is Anderson with staff. What they're requesting to do in this document is to replat Lot 76 so that it has a different set of restrictions in the rest of Summerland Park.
And so they're asking permission to completely disregard our deed of dedication? Yes or no?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Russ from 5519 Summerland Drive. Just being said that this is a private subdivision, as you can see, there are many homeowners here. We are all in agreement that we do not want condos in our, in our, in our development. Many of us have children, including myself. I like to be able to take my son out for a walk and ride his bike. If there's 24 units, 24 cars coming in and out of the Mills Road or the main access point, which I have to go to, to get to my home. I mean, I will no longer feel comfortable taking my son out to ride his bike on a road with 24 to 48 more cars if there's going to be two people in each condo. Just wanted to express my opinion there.
Eric Johnson, let me, let me try and clarify just a couple matters. First, as Noel pointed out, this was rezoned long ago and the rezoning says that the density, there's an issue with density, could be up to 58 homes. That's not what's proposed here, it's 24. That's the deed of dedication. There was that Summerland first, well, there is Summerland, the first Summerland, and then there was Summerland first, which was really the second one. And this is in the second Summerland and that deed of dedication was filed and then 60 days later, before anybody bought anything out there, an amendment happened and that was filed of record. That amendment says very clearly that Lot 76 will be split up and used for multifamily dwellings. That's what the RP plan approved, that this would be multifamily dwellings. So to act, you know, shocked that there's going to be multifamily dwellings before anybody bought in that Summerland first, which is the second part, if anybody bought and that's where this is, there was notice of that. It was approved, okay? Noel, you misstated that. That replat doesn't disregard the subdivision or anything like that. It's a layer on top of that and where there's some confusion as to what can happen on Lot 76, it clarifies that. But it says very specifically in that replat, the deed of dedication continues to apply in this instance. So deed of dedication is not thrown away. This is a layer clarifying what that multifamily is going to happen. So, you know, there's still members of the homeowners association, everything in the deed of dedication applies, whereas the deed of dedication probably didn't go far enough in clarifying what's going to happen on Lot 76. in clarifying what's going to happen on Lot 76, and trying to fill in the gaps, okay? But it doesn't disregard that deed of dedication. So just to clarify a few of those things.
Stephanie Russ again. I have brought my abstract, and I would gladly give this to you, and you show me where Lot 76 is mentioned.
Anybody else like to speak?
I still, I am Gary Uland, I still live at 5541 Summerland. Sorry, I got mixed up in the wrong, the wrong situation there. I have a concern as a homeowner, a couple of things. Number one, the word condo, and you addressed that earlier, and we didn't have a satisfactory answer to my way of thinking, was that, you know, some of the, some of these units may be sold, some of the units may be rented. It's my strong feeling that most of them would be rented. If that is the case, which I think it would be, and I would have to see data that would prove that differently, and the only way we could have that is five years from now or 10 years from now, and if it was a problem, we couldn't extricate it. We can't change it, we can't tear things down that are already built. So I have a big concern there because all of us that are homeowners out there were vetted by the lenders. The lenders looked at us very, very carefully and said, "We'll give this person a home loan." And this has been since the housing crisis. We have our money tied up in our homes. For most of us, our home is our biggest asset. And we experienced a market that nationally went down, and it didn't go down as much in Iowa as it did, let's say, in Nevada. But it did go down, and it's coming back up, and it's very fragile. So when we have the integration of rental and homeowners, we have a problem. At least I do, and I'm sure somebody that would be looking at my house would. Because I see one of the ads here for, and this is a recent ad, one of the ads says, "No application required to rent the property from the developer." And so I say, gee, you know, my next-door neighbor, who is a wonderful guy, and his wife's a wonderful gal, and their little kid's a wonderful person, but they were vetted. And now we're going to bring into our community people that haven't been vetted, no application required. In other words, if I was a drug dealer, and I had a lot of cash, all I got to do is come in and say, "Hey, you know, I really like that unit. Here's $1,000 deposit," or whatever is required, "here's the first month's of rent," and I'm in. And I watched this subdivision very, very carefully. I lived there six and a half years. As you can see, I have a medical condition that requires me in a recliner, and my recliner's in the front window, because I have a front bedroom, and I watch what's going on in the subdivision. And what's going on's not much, and that's great. We don't have a lot of traffic, and the kids are safe out on the street. I just watched three young girls at 2:00 today go down the street on their little scooters. And I thought to myself, well, what if somebody came speeding around here and hit one of those girls? And I watch people walk dogs, and I watch mothers with cranky babies out there on, because we don't have sidewalks. And so safety is a concern to me also. So it's not just my home and the value of my home that I'm concerned about, but I don't want to see anyone hurt. I don't want to see any crime. If I saw somebody coming up to my neighbor's house, and then all of a sudden there's another car, and another car, and another car at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, and I only sleep two hours at a time, so I'm up, and I'm watching at 2:00 in the morning, as I was this morning. And I'm going to watch those sorts of things. And now we integrate in people that haven't been vetted, no application required, it's a concern. Thank you for your time.
If I could, real quick, one question, sir. On the advertisement with "no application," was that an advertisement for DS Rentals?
Yes, available November 1st, 2014. And I have several others here also.
I would actually pull up just rentals on them that I own.
Do you want to address it?
Are we guaranteed that there will be a screening process?
I think what I'll do is I'll give Brent an opportunity to, I guess, help you understand maybe his process in renting his units.
Brent Dolestrom. I have various entities, and each, each rental costs for a different thing. I don't know what ad he's speaking of. If you would go to any of the website that has to do with any of condos like this, there's definitely an application required. We have some very limited rentals throughout town that do not. This is not one of them. That would be, you know, we have an old motel, certain areas of Cedar Falls, we get only you and I students. So there are times we don't, but that is not the case. If you'd go to River Trail, West Hills, certain, that are, anything new like this, you have to have an application. In order to be approved, you have to file an application. We check the Blackhawk County Courthouse records, and we check everyone's criminal record. We do not discriminate against age, race, gender, anything that is required of us, and so we, and so we would never do that, but as far as criminal records, they, we do have a check of that, for sure.
Thanks.
So I'm just going to make a couple comments. The question was why it didn't show up in this abstract. So Lot 76 is in Summerland first, which is the second addition. This abstract is for a lot which is in Summerland, which was the first portion. This wasn't even developed, so I mean, you don't show, I mean, you only show what's in your subdivision. And while there's somewhat married subdivisions, you know, a common homeowners association, I mean, it's just, it doesn't show in that. It wouldn't show. I mean, if it got updated today, it wouldn't show. It's just not part, part of it, so that's why it doesn't show. You know, as far as, there's a couple of questions about renters, you know, whether they're condo owners or renters, you know, they're probably going to have kids too, and they're going to walk on the streets, and, you know, that's just the way it'll be. And, I mean, they'll care about where they live, just like where everybody else cares where they live. And those houses can be rented. You know, there's no requirement that they can't be rented. So, I mean, that's sort of a red herring question, and it shouldn't really be what we're focusing on.
I'd like to just talk about the deed of dedications. I bought my home in 2010, and the deed of dedication, which I would be part of the first division, but it's all one. I mean, we're going to be operating underneath one deed of dedication as a homeowners association, so it absolutely applies to this lot that we're talking about. Bought my home in 2010, it's dated 2005, the deed of dedications that I was given. So if there were changes or amendments made, notification was not made, for sure to me, and I'm guessing to many other homeowners in, in the Summerland Farms or Park area.
So that just reiterates the point. He bought his house in the first subdivision. This is all occurring in the second subdivision. Lot 76 is on the far west of that subdivision. Everything around it, on that portion of the street, is all in that second subdivision. That second subdivision, for anybody bought a house in there, they would have got a abstract with an update of deed of dedication. Second subdivision had its own deed of dedication, okay? It's separate from that first one, and anybody that bought there would have been put on notice that Lot 76 was multifamily. And for those in that first subdivision, obviously there was zoning that took place, and they would have been put on notice through the zoning.
Josh Meyer, 5846. Good lawyer in right there. If you look, there's only one way in. Doesn't matter who bought it, when, it's one subdivision. I don't care who bought what, when. My abstract, my deed of dedication applies to everybody else who's in here, and just because Lot 76 was purchased, or it's a different Summerland, it's not. You have to drive by my house to get to that, no matter what. So it's in my neighborhood, same place.
Okay. So I just want to talk about what Summerland Park is right now, currently. For the original 40, 14 homeowners, the community was one of six home designs to choose from, ranging in square footage from 1,300 to 2,300 square feet, with a selling price of 180,000 to 260,000. In 2009, the IDED Single Family New Construction Project application was approved for five styles of single-family homes, ranging in square footage from 1,200 to 1,500 square feet, to stay in harmony and compatible with the existing homes, with a selling price of 165,000 to 190,000. In addition, there's approximately a half dozen duplexes that have similar design and square footage with the current homes. The above establishes what the current design and compatibility of the homes in Summerland Park subdivision is. The request to construct two 12-unit residential three-story high condos is not compatible with the surrounding homes, as the subdivision is comprised of single-family and two-family dwellings. Higher-density, lower-cost multifamily use is not compatible and would have a negative impact on the current home values. Condos that are oft, that are often turned, condos are often turned into rental units by the builder or by investors that purchase these lower-cost units to rent. This would also have a negative impact on the private subdivision's HOA, since the investors that do not reside in the subdivision would have the same voting rights as the homeowners that do reside in the subdivision. According to the deed of dedication, no residential dwelling shall be erected on any lot unless the design is in harmony with the existing structures. There are no higher-density, multifamily, multi-story residential units existing in our subdivision, and the intent of the subdivision was always presented to the existing homeowners as single-family home community. If the square footage of the proposed units is not 1,200 to 2,300 square feet, it's not consistent with the current homes in the subdivision. Regarding Brad's vehicle storage, to say in detail, it says that "no truck, van, trailer, camper, motorhome, tractor, or vehicle of any type shall be parked on any street or driveway in the subdivision or kept on any lot unless the same be entirely enclosed in a permanent garage or out of sight from the street or other homes, except for temporary parking of vehicle for short periods of time. The proposed plan with exposed permanent parking spaces does not meet this requirement, and any open parking lots will be visible by, by a very large percentage of the homes, because they are at a much higher elevation, looking down into Lot 76." This would mean that each unit would have to have a two-car garage, the same as all of the single-family and two-family homes currently in the subdivision. The restrictions part, again, that Brad was speaking to, says, quote-unquote, "That all persons and corporations hereafter acquiring the right title or interest in any of the lots in said subdivision shall be taken and held to have agreed and covenanted with the owners of all other lots in the subdivision, and with the respective successors, and signs of all the rest of the other lots, to conform to and observe all the foregoing covenants, restrictions, stipulations, as to the use and construction or building thereon for a period of 21 years, from the date of said plat and this deed of dedication for record." And I have a petition signed by 43 homeowners, current homeowners, opposing the proposed plan in our private subdivision, and we are basically saying no to the request for multifamily, multi-story dwelling being allowed in the subdivision, because it does not conform and is not in common with what is currently in the private subdivision that we have. Per the restrictions above, the homeowners would, would oppose any proposed projects that don't conform with the existing dwellings, a minimum of 1,200 square feet, no multi-story, multifamily, and garages to accommodate all parking requirements. You know, similar subdivisions across the country, when we talk about, you know, multi, multifamily, you know, there's a lot of definitions and a lot of design of multifamily. You know, it's not only, you know, a three-story, 12, 12-unit building. So, you know, we, we definitely are willing to compromise with Brent. You know, we think that, you know, four-to-six unit townhomes that are one to, one-to-two story in height, that are connected with two-car garages and small yard space per unit, you know, when designated as multifamily zoning, would probably be something that fit into the, to the subdivision in this type of plan, if in harmony and consistent with the existing homes, would most likely meet with the current homeowner's approval.
Just to clarify about that vehicle restriction, that is a restriction that is in the first subdivision. In the second subdivision, that's not true, okay? Second subdivision says you can't permanently park boats, trailers, you know, trucks, other than pickup trucks, on the street. But, but vehicles, you can park in your drive, and they don't have to be covered. So, once again, talking about a restriction in that first subdivision, but this is in the second subdivision. Second subdivision deed of dedication, as amended, allows it, and has always stated that Lot 76 would be multifamily.
Could you please read us the exact language of the parking requirements? You have the deed written up. So we can all hear exactly what it is, just to be fair, since we heard the originals on the line.
Says, "No motorhome or recreational vehicle, trailer of any kind, whether camping boat, house utility, otherwise, shall be parked or kept for any mo, for more than 48-hour period on any street, driveway, or on the lot. Any such vehicle must be stored inside the garage." So we're talking about motorhomes, RVs, campers, boats. "No bus, semi-tractor, trailer, or truck of any kind, except what is commonly described as a pickup truck, shall be kept or parked on any lot or street, provided, however, that this prohibition shall not apply to such vehicles driven in pursuit of and in conducting their usual business."
Thank you. The site plan has drawings that include two 12-stall garages. Does that not comply with this requirement, that they be covered? There's two 12-stalls.
Two stalls per condo, by city requirements, from my understanding, so all 48 need to be covered.
They don't need to be covered, that's what they're asking.
But are these not covered garages on here?
They are.
Yeah.
But they don't have to be.
These are renters' parking stalls.
That's a new one. Go ahead, sorry. Name and address.
Tina Everding, I live at 5649 Summerland Drive. Darian is my daughter. I purchased my home December 15th, 2006, so I'm one of the first ones who's lived out there. I'd like to clarify one thing for you, sir. When I bought my home, it was one subdivision. When he, when Andrew McLennan sold it to me, it was Phase 1, Phase 2, not Subdivision 1 and Subdivision 2. There is a difference. It is one giant circle right now. I just needed to clarify that.
Thanks.
Brent Dolestrom, I just, I just think it'd be probably wise to go over my intent for the project, and, and kind of where, where I, what I was hoping for with the project. This project came under trouble with Mr. Guthrie, and he, you know, came to me as to sell it all, and so I researched the area, and I'm planning on building homes. So I bought 19 residential lots, and so planning some homes from the range of 180 to 275,000 dollars. And then I found this piece, which is something that I do often, and you've seen some, maybe some of you have seen my projects, like the one down the street, but to have some condos, and whether those rent or for sale. But, you know, a lot of times, the gentleman that came up and spoke earlier, I do run a lot of them, and I'll get to that in a second. And then the final piece was the one on Desert Road, and that was more of a town homes that I planned to sell for right around the 150,000 dollar range. So as far as the design itself, the front is going to have, you know, almost 40% brick, which, you know, I think, you see a lot of these, and you won't have any brick at all. That, that is an expense that isn't always taken. That's, for this project alone, it'll be roughly $96,000 per building, just to do the brick instead of siding. So it's a, it's a major upgrade from then what you'd see certain areas do. Each one of them has a deck, and, and so then people want to know is what kind of these people, I think renters all get lumped into one very ugly, bad spot of a person. And so I'm not, I'm not sure that's always fair. You can go to CNN, and you see that 80% of all new households formed are You can go to CNN, and you see that eighty percent of all new households formed are renters, you know, because of certain things that the gentleman talked about, the crash, people aren't getting married as soon. There's a lot of reasons that people rent instead of buy. It's harder to get along than it used to be. So, there's, there's a lot of people that do rent, and so, you know, in Waterloo is looking for these people, some, I'm going to give you some examples that live in these exact buildings. We have John Deere workers, we have doctors, we have nurses, we have lawyers. These people are just like all of us, and who's to say which one is better than the rest, really, you know? And so, I did it as an affordability study, and I think that's interesting to look at, because the average home in here is, you know, right around one-hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's the average home in Summerlin. And so, if you, if you did twenty percent down and a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar mortgage, the average monthly payment would be six-hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month. You add taxes and insurance, and you're, you're right around that one thousand dollars per month to live in this neighborhood. That's, that's a, that's a rough estimate, but, you know, I think that's pretty fair, and that is exactly what I charge for these rentals. So, what these people can afford, and if you're judging everyone on the basis of income, which I also don't think is fair, it's going to be very similar people as far as affordability in this neighborhood. As far as fitting in on the design, I think a lot of that is, you know, siding and brick, which not all people have the brick, but I think that design fits in very nicely as far as having a deck, having siding, having brick, actually even having block as well. So, I just wanted to go over that, what the project was. It's not, I just don't think it's right to judge what type of person it is. I think they're people just like everyone else, and they will make sure they don't have a criminal record, but I think they'll be good people and citizens of Waterloo. Thank you.
Brent, this is Tackett. Did you, do you own River Trails?
Yes.
I live there.
Oh, you do?
I do. So, I attest, my neighbors are all professionals. It's wonderful, it's extremely well-built. I have no question working of all the places I've had to live and rent, and we had circumstances, well, our kids are grown, and we had circumstances, it was the right choice. That is the most well-maintained, well-built apartment I've ever lived in. I've lived in California, I've lived here, and when our garage door had a little blip, you were on it. I was extremely impressed. I have a question with that. I think the question here is, I don't know if it's a fit for the neighborhood, and I'll be honest, that's where I, I just don't know. But as far as your quality, and as far as renters or some of us, it does fit, and we're very good homeowners, and it's actually the most quiet place I've ever lived. It was quieter than the neighborhood I lived in down, over by Crossroads. We live next to the train. It's kind of cute, that little bell sound. We have pets, we have dogs in there, you never hear anything. So, I would say for Brent's workmanship, it is outstanding. I was just impressed. It is so quiet, and we've had people come over, and they were very impressed, so I don't have a problem with it. I think there are concerns, but I think as far as that, I just want to speak up, because no, I've been very impressed, and I chill, but the reason why I'm hesitant, I chose her because I own a business right next door. So, for me, I walk two minutes, I'm at my business. I can, you know, open up and get everything ready for my clients, ready to go. It has worked out, so I don't worry about gas. So, the convenience of living downtown has, it makes sense, but this is way out there, and I'm just thinking that as a homeowner, because we looked at options, we looked at, you know, you know, do we need to, you know, get a mobile home? Do we need to, you know, look at somewhere out? Do we want to look back on the homeownership? And if I were looking out that direction, I would think more homeownership, and I just think maybe that's just, I think what I'm saying, it's just not maybe the best fit. So, I just want to clarify for the audience, he does do amazing work. I absolutely love where I live, but I just don't know if it's the right fit, and that's where I'm coming from. I'm, that's, you know, I just wanted to clarify that.
First of all, thank you very much. That was very kind. I do want to touch on the, you know, so you live downtown, and we have numerous people that come to us daily that want somewhere to live, and sometimes people are adamant they don't want to live downtown Waterloo, for one, some reason or another. Some is what they've heard from people from Sierra Falls, that it's unsafe, which is not true, or that it's, you know, you're going to see people that you don't want to see. So, some people just won't live down here, and so we started some over in the west side of Waterloo, and it's just a total, different mindset. It's not a different person, it's a different mindset of what they want to be around. Some would think that even though you did say it's quiet down here, they, they don't, they just don't think that it could be quiet. So, this is an area that I see as, it's secluded, it's nice. You know, I, some of these people might not think I like Summerlin. I drive out there, and it's one of the most beautiful settings and a sunset, and people will sit out there, and they would love to see that. And I do think it fits. There's, next to you, down here in River Trail, there is the homes that the former mayor, Ruff, built in the IDED program as well, and it's right next door. And to speak a little bit on if neighborhoods are cohesive, I just went to, which Noel's at it, it was a meeting in downtown with a hundred people from all over the community, and somebody from the state of Iowa came and said that a study was done in Boston, Massachusetts, at some ID Lake school that I wasn't smart enough to get into, that said, the neighborhoods that produce, the greatest neighborhoods in the United States have a mix of all types of housing. So, I mean, once again, I'm just saying, I think this is a perfect neighborhood, this is what it was designed for. In two thousand and three, this was going to be up to fifty-eight units, I came down to twenty-four. I've actually thrown different proposals at the city, and they just said that was too many people. So, I'm, I know it seems like I'm asked for a lot, but this is a lot less than what I originally asked for, so, thank you.
And I have a question, because I live there, do I need to abstain for a conflict of interest? I want to be fair, so I'm not voting inappropriately.
No, you should not, as long as you're not going to profit in any way from the decision or anything like that. As long as Brent's not going to evict you now, we should be okay.
I just want to make sure, I'll make sure that's okay, then, because I want to make sure I won't do it improperly.
Hi, my surgeon, Goleb, I'm in five-five-three-five Summerlin Drive, and thank you for coming in, and thank you for saying that. I don't think I was really ever concerned about the quality of the co-ercmanship, more is it's not in continuity with the neighborhood, and you brought that up, that was your concern. I think for me, that is the largest concern. One thing I want to bring up is when Mr. Dollstrom brought up the site plan amendment for the Dyser Road, one of the reasons that it was denied is because it was not in continuity with the rest of the neighborhood, because he also proposed to put those high-story condos there, and it was denied, and then, you know, he went with the condos, which they fit in better. So, I don't see what the difference is, two hundred feet. I mean, that's really, that's all it is, it's within a neighborhood. And he did talk about, you know, the sunset, it is a really nice sunset, you know, we have a really nice clear field, but the people that are going to be behind those buildings, they're not going to have view to that. If something's three stories, you're not going to be able to have that. I don't care how far you put it back, or the buffer, it's still not, it's going to, it's going to stand out, really, in the neighborhood. When you look at a neighborhood like any of the surrounding areas that we're at, when you look at it, it's all single-story. So, this will stand out. It will not be in continuity with the neighborhood, or fit in with the rest of it. And I think we were all buying homes. We were told that deed of dedication protects us, that no residential dwelling shall be erected on any lots unless the design allocation is in harmony with its existing structures. To me, existing structures right now are single-family homes, a couple duplexes. So, a three-story condo, whatever, twelve-plex, I don't think it fits in, and we were sold on it, really, when they were selling us these lots and selling us these houses, they told us this is what it's going to be. It's going to be single-family housing, that's it. And that's why we invested in it, this is why we came, this is why we put money in it, improved on it, because we thought this is what the neighborhood is going to be. Plain and simple. I just don't think it's a good fit for our neighborhood. Thanks. Thank you.
Preston Gibbons, five-five-two-five. And I had one question, how many rooms or how many bedrooms are going to be in your apartment, or condos?
Two beds or two baths per unit?
Two beds, two baths, okay, all right. Which five-hundred-dollar rent seems to be not bad, especially, I'm looking at the location of where we're at. We are very close to Hawkeye Community College. I don't know if any of you guys has ever driven by, guys and gals, have driven by Hawkeye apartments. I know I've been to a couple of parties in Hawkeye apartments. Quite a bit going on there. Anyway, five-hundred-dollar rent, you know, somebody goes in, signs the one-year contract, awesome, I'm in this sweet building, and now, wait, I know a bunch of other college buddies in here. Long story short, what I'm getting concerned with is five-hundred dollars for rent is fairly cheap. And say we get a bunch of college kids, because we are fairly close, obviously, they would have to not be condos, they'd have to be rented out. Well, now we have college kids staying up late, and we have many, many cars, because, you know, now it's two people, two cars, per unit, and then, now we have, we have a lot of children, a lot of children. And I'm, my concern is, all of the cars and all of the college kids and all of the drunk parties that will be, granted, okay, maybe they don't drink, we'll put it that way. A lot of the cars that are going through there, I mean, we've seen a couple of times, there's cars that just fly down our road, you know, and I guess my concern is, is that going to happen? Are these going to turn into college dorm rooms? And the other part is, is, if they, who's going to upkeep the outside of these? Because every college dorm room that I've ever seen, or college apartment that I've ever seen, is completely trashed. So, I guess my concern is, one, traffic and safety of children, and two, the upkeep of these buildings. And, yeah, the sunset they were talking about, I live where I live, that's right over that lake, and it would, no more sunset. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the hearing.
Move and second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Thanks to the commission for discussion. And again, I will be abstaining from this vote. Any discussion? Any comments? Action?
Well, I'll start it off, I thought this one is a tougher one, just on the, for me, and the, how it fits with the rest of the neighborhood. And some of the arguments that I thought of before, on the timing, about the homeowners' association not being together, I looked at it a little differently than I did the first site plan amendment that we had for the twin homes. Any further discussion?
I think there's a lot of good comments from the, from both groups here tonight, and I do think this is a different proposal than the previous one, for obvious reasons. I, I guess I too, kind of went along with what Lynn was saying, that, you know, I guess I have to look at it from the standpoint of, if I had a house next door, would that be what I would like to see? I think some of the arguments about the world coming to an end probably wouldn't occur. I don't think that that's a problem, I think they'd be well-run, and I think the gentleman that's proposing this has kind of proven himself to be a valuable part of the community. But I do think that a three-story building in that location tends to be obtrusive, in my mind's eye. The number of units doesn't bother me a bit, it's the bulk of the, of the mass of the buildings there that I sort of trip up on. So, that's my, that's my two cents worth.
I would like to say that I actually appreciate Mr. Dollstrom's sentiment about renters. That is a very important piece of this, that not all renters are bad people, in fact, they are lawyers, they are doctors, they are positive members of society. So, I do appreciate not just the sentiments, but your efforts to help provide housing for the city. I do share some of the same concerns that were reiterated today, though, that the continuity of the neighborhood is potentially in jeopardy with this vote.
Anybody willing to make a motion off of those comments? Or other comments?
Buckles, I look at this situation, and I keep popping back to Sunnyside Country Club, and where my stepmother lives, she lives in this three-story condominium, right there, you know, Westchester.
Anybody willing to make a motion off of those comments? Or other comments?
Buckles, I look at this situation, and I keep popping back to Sunnyside Country Club, and where my stepmother lives, she lives in this three-story condominium, right there, you know, Westchester, I think it's called, right in the middle of all these hundred, hundreds of thousand-dollar houses and stuff, and the big fancy country club and stuff like that. I kind of agree with the mixed-use thing. There's also apartment buildings mixed in with all these nice homes and stuff like that. I think the condo part would be a guarantee that, you know, it'd be good, but you can't, there's no guarantee anymore that anybody can afford the thousand dollars a month for a condo, but if you're going to rent, I mean, we all started out, I'm a homeowner, I started out as a renter once, too. You got to start somewhere, and I think the size of the rent, the minimum he's setting, is going to kind of weed out any problems, but there's no guarantees. I make a motion that we accept the, approve the amendment site plan.
Quiet, please. Subject to the two staff recommendations?
Subject to staff recommendations.
Then motion to approve the site plan amendment request, subject to the two staff conditions?
In the interest of closing or finishing the motion, I'll second.
Move and second it. Any further discussion on that motion?
This is Morrison. I think it's unfortunate that the homeowners' association hasn't had time to get up and running, because these kinds of things, I think, are better dealt with in that situation before it got here. The deed of dedication, the consistency of the neighborhood, and so I think that the task before us is what should have been a fairly simple request, and an unfortunate disaster has happened out there, and I hate to see us make it much worse. But there's two separate sections with two different sets of rules, and I think unfortunately, this is going to get boos, but change is inevitable, and change is hard. When I bought my home south of town, I had expectations of what it looked like today is what it's always going to look like, and I'm not a fan of hog confinements, but there's more of them, and there's nothing I can do about it, change is inevitable. So, I really, really want the homeowners' association to do everything you possibly can to get up and running, because I think if you look at the green space around you, this is going to be an ongoing topic. I think your subdivision is going to continue to have challenges to what you see as your routine way of life. I don't think it's going to get easier.
Any further comments? That will do a roll call vote. Rankin?
No.
Gustafson?
No.
Paul?
No.
Young?
No.
Morrison?
No.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Abstain.
Tackett?
No.
Motion fails.
That motion fails. I guess Noel's been educating me, sitting here. I can ask for a revised motion from the commission, if there's different action that they'd like to see come out of this, or we can continue with our agenda. Meaning, we can table it, we can flat-out deny it, et cetera. So, that's up for discussion.
Could we table it and ask for a revised plan that better fits the neighborhood? I could phrase that in a motion, if the answer to that is yes.
Yes.
And that, I guess, going to the developer and the lot owner, I mean, that, yeah, I struggled with two things. I struggled with the fact that the homeowners' association that hasn't been formed yet, it did, I looked at it with a different perspective, this one than I did the first one we had, and so that would lead to tabling it. I wasn't completely opposed to developing this lot, and it's a tough lot to develop, so I-
Is that accurate? Last, the last packet was two-story. So would, was that one more in line with what?
Yeah, but I, what I don't wanna do is overstep my bounds here and tell you what you should do with your money and your lenders and that sort of thing.
Yeah, well, if I could ask, I, I would prefer it be tabled, the new site plan. Um, it, it sounds to me that, and in previous conversations, I wanted to get to today to find out what you guys wanted. I understood that it wasn't three-story now. It is multifamily, and, and so I'm hoping that a table with a, a two-story concept, uh, 'cause that's been a lot of the conversation, there is two stories already out there. If you could table it and give me a chance to revise the site plan to a two-story, um, concept, I'd be willing to come back. And also give the homeowners a, a chance to, um, you know, you know, have another thirty days, and, and see what can happen in those thirty days as well.
And that was my question, is since you're a member, if maybe it can work together, the neighbors, that there could be some workable situation on what maybe, so if they have a part, um, 'cause I know that is, is that the only lot that's zoned R3, is Lot 76? Or is it basic, if I understand, that whole area was zoned R3, it just ended up being R1?
All subdivisions, R3, RP. As I was gonna say, on page twenty, we have the zoning on the, the whole, the entire subdivision's R3, RP.
So, and, and for me, you know, I, we don't wanna keep coming here and having the same conversation, so, you know, direction from the commission would be great, is, is what we've decided today, that we want to see a two-story concept. I've, I've heard from many of you, that density isn't the issue, um, and I've heard from a lot of you, that maybe rentals isn't the issue, but maybe it is the three stories itself. So if that is the case, I think, you know, give me that, and let me run with it, and see what I can do.
Just wanna know, I just answered that wrong. The map up here, um, it's R3, RP, on the north side of the bottom part of Summerland, I think it was the south two-hundred feet or so was R2.
Oh. Okay. So, just procedurally here, would it make sense to make a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'll make a motion to table this request indefinitely.
And do you wanna give him some guidance on as to what you're looking for? Table it and come back with a two-story design, or a more compatible design, or, I know Miss Stubby noted some things that...
I would say more compatible design with the neighborhood, and I don't know, in terms of giving an extension for time to the homeowners and the homeowners' association to get going, I mean, that's just implicit, I guess, or if it's tabling it until... Can you come up with a design before the, well, it's July fifteenth, is the next deadline?
To submit?
I don't know. Is there a particular reason why we would have to put a timeframe in it, but just have him come back when he's ready to proceed?
So I, I will make the motion to table this, um, for a redesign based on compatibility?
Yeah.
And I'll keep that up for a second.
Second.
Move and second to table the request, uh...
Rankin.
Rankin. For, uh, what was that? Design compatibility?
A redesign for compatibility.
Any further discussion on that motion? Do a roll call vote again? Gustafson?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Abstain.
Tackett?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
That, uh, motion passes six one?
Seven one.
Seven one. So that'll come back on one of our agendas in the future.
All right, next on our agenda is a, uh, special permit request. This is a request by Candy and Jason Streed for a special permit to allow for a hobby farm located in an R1, one and two family residence district located at two fifty-eight Kennelworth Road. Staff port?
Staff port.
Staff port?
There we go. This is Western staff. Uh, would appear that the request would not have a negative impact on the area. Uh, the chickens are located in the rear yard and away from property lines. Uh, the lot in question is approximately point two-one-five acres, uh, in size, which would allow for sufficient space to locate chickens away from the adjacent property lines. Uh, the entire area, uh, surrounding the site in question, uh, is zoned R1, one and two family residence district. Um, the said property in question was built in nineteen twenty-six, and the majority of the homes were built around the same time period, with a few sprinkled in, in the late nineteen hundreds. Um, the future land use map design makes this area as low-density residential. The proposed hobby farm would not appear to fit the characteristics of agricultural use, and would not be in conformance with the future land use map. However, the primary use of the property is residential, which is in conformance with the future land use map, and the hobby farm would be incidental to the primary use. The applicants are requesting a special permit to allow a hobby farm within the R1, one and two family residence district, to raise up to five hens as pets and for eggs. The site in question is, um, a point two-one-five acre parcel located at two fifty-eight Kennelworth Road. The applicants have indicated the chickens would be housed in an existing chicken coop behind a garage in the rear yard. The applicants have noted that the pen will not be adjacent to property lines. The request, uh, could have a negative impact on surrounding neighborhood. Staff does have concerns regarding the chickens causing issues with the neighborhood such as noise. However, the special permit for a hobby farm is an annual permit that can be revoked at the end of twelve months, if it is found that the hobby farm is not being operated in accordance with the zoning ordinance, or has become a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhood. If it is, if it is found that there are problems, uh, with the site within the twelve months, staff will recommend denial of the, the reissuance of the permit the following year. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a special permit to allow a hobby farm with up to five chickens, with no roosters. And, the chickens will be contained, uh, within the fenced-in area and chicken coop, but shall not be located adjacent to property lines.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to address the, uh, special permit request?
Uh, excuse...
Thank you for your patience.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Whitehead, um, there was a letter of opposition that came in late. Uh, everyone has that.
Yeah, I think we already received it. Thanks.
Hi, um, my name is Candy Streed. I'm at two-five-eight Kennelworth Road in Waterloo. Um, I'd hoped my entire family would be able to talk this afternoon, but, um, it's been a, a family endeavor. Uh, I'm not sure, I did send a letter, um, uh, to you all from our family. Um, and you have that with some pictures of, of our family with, with the chickens. Um, this is, this started out as a, a family project to kind of, you know, help our, you know, our children understand where our food comes from. Um, I also do work for an organization, that that's primarily our mission, so, um, it's near and dear to my heart and my family's. Um, we have five laying hens. Um, recently, we, well, we've had them for three years, not really understanding the, that, that there's been changes to ordinances and, and what is allowable. And so, obviously, we wanna do what, what is right, and we do not want our, our chickens, which are a food source, as well as pets in some ways, you know, um, to be a nuisance to our neighbors. And so, um, up to this point, um, we have, we have had conversations with most of our neighbors, especially our adjacent neighbors, and they have been involved with our, our family project, as well as their families. Um, so we had, up to this year, we had not had any issues or anyone having a concern with the, with any noise level. Um, we've heard that someone says they think there's a rooster, but we haven't heard it, but it, we don't. It's a hen that maybe once in a while calls out that she's laid an egg, okay? And, and, you know, if that persists, you know, and spring windows open, I'm wondering if that wasn't part of, part of the concern here. Um, we are very conscientious of, about providing a safe, clean environment that is appropriate for the animals, um, and I have addressed those things in the letter. I don't know if you want me to cover those things, but in, in, in talking with our other neighbors, I have a, um, a petition, and we went around and asked as many neighbors as we could in the timeframe, this was kind of a fast item to get on the agenda, and with vacations and, and such. We do have, um, I think, I don't know, a dozen or so signatures, if you'd like that. Also, our adjacent, immediate, adjacent neighbors sent a letter of support, I think you have that as well, from Ladine Bowen at five fifty Kennelworth. Um, the ones, so those, um, addresses are ones that are at least in the immediate visual of our backyard. So, um, I don't know what else you'd like us to address. One thing, we, when we were talking with the neighbors, this has been a, you know, I, obviously, you know, we're neighborly folks, and we're a part of our community, and been there like almost ten years. Um, we have, I just, I'm wondering if I wrote on the back of that, I was gonna say that one of the key questions that we found from our other neighbors was, a, a couple of com- comments was, "We had no idea you even had chickens." They're pretty quiet, except for a few clucking at times. And then, the second item was that, they're like, "Do you have any plans to add any more animals?" And they sometimes jokes, "If we're gonna put a goat in there." And I, I assure them, "We're not, it's just our laying hens." And so, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, I apologize that my family, we had to transport kids from different locations, so we couldn't all stay here, but, um, this has been a family endeavor and a family responsibility, built, from building the coop to, um, maintaining the coop, to maintaining the animal's health, and, and also the production of it, so. And usually, our neighbors benefit from, from, from the, the bounty of, of, of our, um, animals. So, at this point, uh, we have no plans to expand the number of our chickens. If indeed we do have one that is noisier, felt to be a nuisance to any of our neighbors, we'd be happy to find that chick in a new home. And I mean, it, I mean, 'cause this is the first in three, that we've had any concerns about it.
Any questions for the applicant?
That, your last point was my question, and I work with Bob Braun, and so I'm debating, I don't think it's technically a, um, conflict of interest, but, um, Bob was the one that, that Bob and Kathy wrote the letters, and I know they have impeccable integrity, so if they say they can hear your chickens, I believe them that they can hear your chickens. If that is one or two, you can remove that chicken?
Yeah. Well, it certainly would be nice that, um, I didn't know there was an issue until I got a letter, and posted on my door, and my kids were kind of freaked out, to be honest, that, "Why would anybody wanna take our chickens?" You know, and, and I understand their law, but it's certainly the neighborly thing, you know, I wish that if we have a concern, you know, that we'd come and chat about it. It isn't something, it was not something to be done maliciously at all, and honestly, honestly, we don't hear that sound, and, and the other neighbors that are in the vicinity also have said that it's not an issue. I'm just saying.
Candy, I guess what I'm asking, did you check with the Bronns?
No, but I don't see, I don't know them.
See, so some of the neighborly questions, they might have been asking of you, not the other way around, so. Um, 'cause they, what they mentioned is the...
But they are not in my immediate view shed.
Oh, I, I think they're right behind you.
Well, there is trees and other structures in their corner, and then trees on our side, so the ones that we talked to are the ones that immediately touch us, from the, the Smiths, that, that's a rental now, I mean, or, it, they aren't, they're not always there, and then the Lesses, and then the Bowens. So, I mean, and at this point, I, you know, in, in the past, their grandchildren have been at our house with the chickens. So I didn't realize it was a problem.
Yeah, when you went around and asked for permission, did you check with?
What permission?
Checked with some on...
I mean, I did when we first started, but I just talked to my immediate neighbors when we...
Oh, okay.
I didn't, recently did not talk with them.
Gotcha, okay.
Well, and, and...
That might be a good idea, is all I'm saying.
Right. I, and I'd be happy to. And, and actually, my husband did stop over, um, we went around the whole neighborhood, but like I said, not in, in two weeks, less than two weeks' time, we couldn't get, we did not hear from him. But also, I wish that, at the same token, if there was, if there's a concern, you know, I didn't know there was, and after three years, I didn't know. Yeah. I don't know what else to say, and I agree, but I think it's a two-way street, and, and there are, yeah, I agree, but my husband did stop over to try to chat, but no one was home. Yeah, and, and I, I don't really actually know them very well, just know of them from grandchildren, that, 'cause our kids are the same age, so.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one, this is Morrison, and I'm looking in the letter to try and see where I got this idea, but I read something that gave me the indication that the chicken coop is near the back of your property?
Well, they're long lots, and so it's, yeah, it's in the backyard. We have, there's a privacy fence on, on the one side, that typically that's in the area where they're located, uh, you know, but over further on our pro, you know, not right up next to it, 'cause there's hostas and other plant life there.
In the back of your property, would that be the back of the family that you're talking about?
No, that's the Lesses' yard, not theirs. Not, not the, I'm, I'm aware of.
Well, Bob and Kathy are here, they can talk.
Yeah. But I also would say that the other, the petition also says that those folks actually, there are other people that support it and don't find a nuisance to the animals, well...
Yeah, please understand, I'm not saying that's not the case, I'm just, I'm not saying it's mutually exclusive.
Mm-hmm. I understand, and I'm, I'm just saying there's, there's more, I mean, I, I believe that my chicken, if they were loud that morning, they probably were, I didn't know it, and we did not hear them.
But you'll get rid, if they're loud, you'll find them another home.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and we didn't, and we definitely don't have any roosters, never had roosters. So.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one, this is Morrison, and I'm looking in the letter to try and see where I got this idea, but I read something that gave me the indication that the chicken coop is near the back of your property?
Well, they're long lots, and so it's, yeah, it's in the backyard. We have, there's a privacy fence on, on the one side, that typically that's in the area where they're located, uh, you know, but over further on our pro, you know, not right up next to it, 'cause there's hostas and other plant life there.
In the back of your property, would that be the back of the family that you're talking about?
No, that's the Lesses' yard, not theirs. Not, not the, I'm, I'm aware of.
Well, Bob and Kathy are here, they can talk.
Yeah. But I also would say that the other, the petition also says that those folks actually, there are other people that support it and don't find a nuisance to the animals, well...
Yeah, please understand, I'm not saying that's not the case, I'm just, I'm not saying it's mutually exclusive.
Mm-hmm. I understand, and I'm, I'm just saying there's, there's more, I mean, I, I believe that my chicken, if they were loud that morning, they probably were, I didn't know it, and we did not hear them.
But you'll get rid, if they're loud, you'll find them another home.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and we didn't, and we definitely don't have any roosters, never had roosters. So.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anybody else?
From a procedural, do I have an opportunity to respond?
Yeah.
My name is Robert Braun, I live at one sixty-five Woodland here in Waterloo, and you have a picture of the location of our home. Um, it is a nuisance to us, and, and you might put us down as cranky old folks, but as I get older, uh, I find it harder to sleep at night. I am a light sleeper, so is my wife. I've taken to wearing earplugs, we close our windows, and there's clucking in the morning at four AM, four AM. Uh, they clucked this morning, woke up my wife. Uh, we have difficulty getting back to sleep. I consider that to be a nuisance. Now, I wanna be neighborly, and I wanna understand that they want to do these things for their children, but we've lived in that house since nineteen sixty-nine. We've not had to deal with this sort of a thing, uh, and it doesn't seem to me that we should have to deal with it. Certainly a change of pace from what you've been listening to here earlier this evening. Certainly a change of pace from what you've been listening to here earlier this evening. And I'm amazed that you're able to continue working. Usually, folks like to take a break at some point, but I honestly think that this is a nuisance. We tried to outline it in our letter. Unfortunately, we're not going to be available when the Board of Adjustment meets. Couple of weeks from now, we're going to be out of town, but we respectfully ask that you deny this request for a special permit. Our lot, the northwest corner of our lot butts up against the southeast corner of their lot. We are neighbors, we do have fences between us, but it's a direct line to us. If we have our windows open, we hear the clucking almost every morning. And our daughter comes down to visit us from time to time. She also is a very light sleeper, and the bedroom that she sleeps in has a window that really overlooks that particular lot. I agree that the chickens are near their home, but the sound seems to carry right up to us. And it seems to us, in this residential neighborhood that's been in existence for so many years, should not have to endure this kind of a nuisance. Thank you.
Buckles, I have a question for you, Mr. Braun. From what I understand, the chickens have been there for three years. Why is it just now that there's, you're complaining?
Well, frankly, we didn't know that we had a right to complain until recently.
Oh, you always have a right to complain.
You're right about that.
Yeah.
But, my wife made a call to the planning and zoning, and she said, and she was told that a special permit is required. We simply didn't know it before.
See, that's what I didn't realize, is that she's had them for three years. I've looked into chickens too, and my, but first thing I found out was you have to have a special permit. So, I was a little concerned about that, but she answered that question, but yeah...
And I don't, maybe she didn't know it either, I didn't know it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Braun? Thank you. Anybody else? Would you like to counter any of that, ma'am?
I would say that, you know, I don't know, counter, just that we don't want, I mean, I had no idea that that was a problem, and I mean, I'm completely sincere, and I say that our family would not want to infringe on anyone else's life.
I have a question for you, for you, ma'am.
And so, we would be willing to remove whoever our loud girl is, which I have to figure out, because honestly, we do not hear this ourselves. Mm-hmm. Do you not, do you keep these, or not? Is it not a point of record? Hmm?
We do.
Okay. So, I'm just saying, we are willing, rather than denying our special permit, it would be nice to have an opportunity to rectify the situation.
That was going to be my question, I mean, from a chicken person's perspective, how do you, is there a way to...
Well, it must be just, we have a new, we have a new girl that must be the noisy one, because up to this point, my understanding is that we haven't had a noise issue.
And that might be a good question to ask the Bronn.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure.
I think we disagree. I think it's been a continuing problem, very primary.
Really? I, well, and I'm not sure what to say to that when it's not an issue with the other neighbors around us.
Are the adjacent neighbors on this petition?
Yes, yes. But, yeah.
This is Tackett, I wonder if it's the type of the sound. I used to, when I first moved here, well, we had chickens for a little bit, and so I know they do have a constant kind of lulling, but for me, I found it kind of calming. We had a neighbor in town that had dogs, so I don't know, for me, I'd rather deal with chickens and dogs barking, but I don't know, I don't know, maybe, I don't know.
We do have some dog issues in our neighborhood.
I wonder if, was that, has been a problem? I'm wondering if the barking dogs, so, and I'm not saying this, I bother you, I completely understand, but I'm wondering if it's maybe the type of the sound that...
I don't know, I think the more, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm a dog person too, but, you know, some of our other neighbors' dogs are a little more rambunctious than others, but I just find that to be background noise to the neighborhood. But, in terms of the clucking, the normal clucking would not be audible to most people. Now, I think that, but when they, if one does crow, like, you know, you know, "I laid an egg," or, you know, "I want to get in the roost," they do make a little, they make a little noise, I mean, they make a, they make a, it's not, I don't know, I can't, I'm not going to make a, are they, I'm going to make a chicken call, people?
Please, please!
Oh, you just love that.
Are they more like guineas, or are they Rhode Island Reds?
No, 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 it's, but, I mean, they will, you know, they, I don't know, sorry.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Bring you back to, unless anybody else wants to talk chickens?
I'd like to call the question, please.
Need a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application as stated by the staff.
Second.
Moving second to approve the special permit request of the two staff conditions.
And for clarification, that is for one year.
Yes.
Correct. And Young is abstaining.
I think the, are we open for discussion now? Okay. I think the reason for a one-year deal is to see if there's any problems, and there is a problem already. So, I guess if this gets approved, then I guess I'd like to see some, I mean, obviously, it's a one-year referendum, if you want to call it that. If it isn't cured in a year, it can go, might go away, but I guess that was just, I wanted to orally present that, that maybe that permit won't be forthcoming if something isn't done to alleviate the problem.
I guess I had a sense from Ms. Steed that they will rectify the problem, and, you know, I think that they have every intention of being good neighbors and wanting to be good neighbors, so.
Any other comments on the motion?
I do think the fact that there is a petition of adjoining neighbors does speak well for Ms. Streed.
Besides, this is Morrison, besides looking for which chicken is the noisiest, could you evaluate the location of the coop, just in case it is, just look at where it is on the property and give consideration to, if it were moved to a different side of the property, would it be easier for them to sleep?
Yes, absolutely. I, that's...
Any other comments? Do a roll call vote.
Hall?
Yes.
Young abstains. Morrison? Is that correct, you have seen?
Yeah.
Okay, correct. Morrison?
No.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
Cufftonson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Six-two.
Six-two, and that'll go on to Board of Adjustment at the end of the month.
Take a two-minute break?
Two minutes, yeah. Been requested to take a quick...
Let my wife know I won't be home.
Two-minute break. All right, thanks for sticking with us there on a quick break. Next is a vacate request. This is a request by Kess and Associates, Inc. to vacate the 15-foot platted utility and drainage easement along the south side of Lot 1 of Summerland Farms addition, generally located north of Mills Lane. Staff report?
Isaiah Daro, staff applicant, is requesting to vacate the 15-foot utility easement that runs parallel to the south lot line of Lot 1, Summerland Farms addition. There appear to be no public utilities located within the easement as shown on the plat map for the partial. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this land through a replat of the lot, and as a part of that subdivision, a new five-foot utility easement will be platted and dedicated for utility purposes parallel to that south property line. There has been discussion with Mid-American Energy Company regarding the easement, and they have indicated, once the easement is vacated and the new five-foot utility easement is dedicated, that it should be sufficient in size for any needs that they may have. Also, Mid-American has been directly discussing with the applicant for new easements that would, that would have to be dedicated elsewhere in the proposed plat for the land in question. Therefore, it appears that any easements needed for the utilities will be appropriately addressed. Staff recommends that the request to vacate the 15-foot platted utility easement located on Lot 1 of Summerland Farms addition be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or traffic conditions in the area. Would not appear that vacating the 15-foot platted easement would negatively impact utilities in the area, and it appears that there are no utilities within the easement and subject to the following condition, that the area in question is final platted with a new five-foot utility easement being dedicated along the south line of the subdivision.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett, I have a question. Who's the applicant again?
Kess and Associates, it's actually on behalf of Brent Dalton.
Did I look, I'm on page 56, it says Iowa Development Enterprises. Am I looking at the wrong one?
No, it's, is that the previous owner?
Is the property still controlled by Iowa Development? No? Okay.
Okay, so it is Kess?
Yeah. It just may have been when they filed the application, I don't, maybe it hadn't been transferred by then.
Isn't that the one that's giving the problem?
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions for staff on the report? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the vacate request?
Darian Everding, 5649. So, I guess I'm slightly confused on the language in the agenda. It does say that it is a utility and drainage easement. I'm not sure I necessarily need to repeat our drainage concerns. However, throughout the rest of, on page 56 and 57, drainage is not mentioned, and at the bottom of page 56, it does say, "The request would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area." I would like to know what evidence you have that it would not negatively impact, what was done to ensure that, and then if there are, the staff analysis says, "It would appear that any easements needed for utilities will be appropriately addressed," at the bottom of page 57. Quite frankly, I don't want to take anyone on what they say, and I'd like to see it in plans, and like to know that that's actually going to happen, rather than, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt. So, I guess I'd like to know what proof we have, that there won't be any differences with drainage, or that it'll be handled appropriately, similar to what we've seen in Mr. Dalton's presentations of how he plans on handling the water. I'd like to see that the same and understand how that will affect it.
Eric, I don't know if you want to address that, or, okay?
Kyle, Helen?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's Kess though.
It's Kess, okay.
I'm not an engineer, that's for sure. Just to sort of reset the table, Kess and Associates were the engineers who worked for Iowa Development. They had started working on this for Iowa Development. Brent bought this from Iowa Development. He's been using Helen for his engineers, but since Kess had already started, they stayed on the plan. So, that's just who's who and why they're here. As far as the drainage, you know, I don't know. I mean, I assume that Kirk from Kess and Associates, Kirk Ashleman from Kess and Associates, I assume that he met with engineering and addressed some of these issues, but I don't know. I mean, there is, I believe that the next item on your agenda is then that replat of this lot, and, you know, once again, that's Kess and Associate, and Eric would have to comment whether he knows how the drainage is handled or what the impact is on the drainage, but Kirk's not here, and I don't know if Kyle wants to try to, but this isn't his, I mean, he knows more than us, but it's not his.
Hi, Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering. I've been out to the site many times. I don't know if that easement is designed to be drainage, it had been, may have been named as a utility and drainage easement on the plating during Summerland Farms, but visiting the site, there's no defined drainage way of any way, shape, or form in that area. I think it's just a Mid-America electrical line that's been buried in that property, and I think the intent is that they want to relocate that to the middle of the other lots. I think that's what the intent was. Will that new easement be a drainage way? I'm not sure, but I think there's a, you know, it's supposed to be designed with those drainage ditches along the perimeter of the property, and that's how stormwater should be flowing properly. Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the vacate request?
Darian Everding, 5649, Summerland again. I would just like to say, simply, holding everything to the same standards, I think we should be able to see specific plans, and perhaps that will come up in the plat motion, but, plat motion, rather, just making sure that we're holding everything to the same standards and understanding where the water issues, as they currently are, are going to be handled. So, I would like to, once again, ask for more time, in the sense that we'd like to see something just a little bit more clear and thought out.
5623, Summerland. I agree with you, there's like a utilities, I heard that in the past, running right across there, Mid-America wants to move it, because it's right in line with the road or something, that it goes through there. My concern, if you guys table this, or whatever, for now, there's no silt fences around that, it's going down in our big pond, silt in the pond more. So, if you guys put a hold on this, I'd like to have you guys, engineering or something, step up and see if we can get that company to put silt fence around. Whoever did work, you know, next to Jason's house, I don't know if it was you guys, did a very good job putting silt fence, and take care of that problem if we're going to table this for a while.
Is that something that we have the ability to do, Eric?
Eric, of course, yeah, we can certainly look at it, but I don't think we were aware that there was any construction going on, and there are size limits, you have to be disturbing over 5,000 square feet before any of our rules apply, so we'll have to look at it, but I don't think we were aware that there was any construction going on there, since there haven't been any plans submitted yet.
Again, it's a private area, and if somebody doesn't tell us about it, we don't, aren't out checking private areas, so.
Come up to, if you would, come up to the microphone, please.
He put in, you guys are doing a very good job on what you've done up there, where he put a duplex in, up around the corner on Summerland. He has not did any dirt work there. It's came down the tile that they have where there should be ditches, and it's silted in, the neighbor ladies down on the corners, tile where it comes out. Now that tile's all plugged. So, while you guys are on this, you know, looking at that silt fence stuff and that, that is a big problem up there, too. It's undermining the driveway that they put in for that duplex up there, too, so I think Jason...
We'll let staff look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to say one thing, if this is approved and moves forward, the next step is going to be that the developer's going to be required to do a SWIP plan, and with that SWIP plan, they're going to be required to do such things as silt fencing, riprap, wattles, and stuff like that. So, by tabling this, this doesn't allow the developer to come in and start addressing those, some of those stormwater issues.
and start addressing those, some of those stormwater issues. So I think the best thing here is, with approval, then he can proceed with the SWIP plan and address those stormwater runoff issues with silt fence. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up? Nope. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or action or comments?
And just for clarification, this is the request to vacate, and the next is the, the second one is the plat?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and that's getting to the point, I think, on getting basically everything done in writing, that it has to be pursuant to city codes with the SWIP. The SWIP is what, Storm Water Improvement Plan, or two Ps or something? Yes, and so I think on the, what I would do is, we're on the vacate right now. I'm sorry, is there any further discussion? I'm making a motion to approve the vacate.
I'm abstaining again.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah, motion to approve the vacate request.
Moving second to approve the vacate request. Any further comments or discussion on the motion?
None.
None. Roll call vote. Young?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Whitehead? Abstain. Tackett?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
Cutherson?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
That request, that motion passes, seven to one. Bringing this on to a plat request. This is a plat request by Kess and Associates, Inc. for a 12-lot final plat for the replat of Summerland Farms Lot Number 1, generally located north of Mills Lane between Summerland Drive and Dyzer Road. Staff report?
Isaiah and Darrow staff, this is a request for a 12-lot final plat of replat of Summerland Farms Lot 1, near the intersection of Mills Lane and Dyzer Road. Applicant looks to construct six new twin homes on the area in question when the lot is subdivided. Approval of final plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. Two of the duplexes would have frontage on Summerland Drive, which is located to the west of the plat. Four of the duplexes would have frontage along an extension of Summerland Drive, which is located between Lots 5 through 12. Summerland Drive is classified as a private street. Applicant, as noted, is requesting to subdivide the lot into 12 lots. Along the frontage of all lots in the subdivision, there are 20-foot building lines, along with 20-foot rear yard setbacks. On the edges of each proposed duplex, there will be a five-foot side yard setback. Each duplex will share a common wall down the middle to proposed buildings. Along the southern edges of Lots 4, 8, and 12, there is a five-foot utility easement to allow for any necessary utilities to serve the subdivision. In an email from Mid-American Energy Company, they have requested that a 10-foot utility easement be maintained between Lots 2 and 3, Lots 6 and 7, and Lots 10 and 11. At the southeast corner of Lot 12, Mid-American has also requested that a 10-by-10 utility easement be established for the purpose of allowing for an electrical enclosure. Also, Mid-American has requested a 15-foot utility easement be maintained along the frontages of Lots 1 through 4, which is shown on the plat. Lot sizes range from 5,063 square feet to 5,737 square feet, which would be sufficiently sized for each dwelling unit. Staff recommends that the request for the final plat of replat of Lot Number 1, Summerland Farms, be approved due for the following reasons. Plat can be serviced by the extension of existing utilities in the area. Plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the plat will create an infill development site within the primary growth area.
Any questions for staff?
This is Tackett. Is this, have we already approved these twin homes, correct?
Yes.
No, we have not. This is part of the tabled issue? I mean, I'm looking at, it's completely different.
Completely different site.
I think the next one is this.
That's a final plat for Lot 76. It'll probably be on a different site plan request. This is Anderson with staff. A site plan amendment for this development was approved on August 6, 2013.
Okay.
For the twin homes. Previously approved. Any other questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the plat request? Any none? Bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
Since we've already approved this back in 2013, and sake of time, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve this final plat with all the conditions, pardon me. I don't think there are any conditions, so I just make a motion, will you approve this?
Second. Moving second, I'm abstaining again. Any further discussion on the plat request? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As to the next item on the agenda, the applicant would ask that that be tabled at this point in time. It sort of doesn't make sense to move forward with this until we come back with the others, so that might have to be revised. So we'd simply ask that that be tabled.
Right. Thank you.
And just, Chairman, just for the audience, this is the request on the 212 complexes. On the second one, that was denied and then tabled, so.
Do you need a formal motion to, I'd like to move that we table the application for the preliminary and final plat for Summerland Condos North.
Second. Moving second to table the plat request for Summerland Condos North, first edition replat of Lot 76. Again, I'm abstaining. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is also tabled. This moves us into some street namings. This is a request by the City of Waterloo to name a new private street as Tunis Circle, generally located east of Progress Avenue and north of Green Hill Road. Staff report?
This is Graham with staff. The request to name this street would not have any negative impact on traffic. However, the development that this new street will serve will increase traffic in that general area. The City of Waterloo is proposing to name the new private street as Tunis Circle. This street will serve that new multi-family residential development that is being planned on 26 acres, located just north of Green Hill Road and east of Progress Avenue. The engineering department has reviewed the naming of the street and recommends approval of it, and therefore, it's staff's recommendation to approve the street naming based on the engineering department's review of the street and recommending approval.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience like to speak to the street naming? Any none? Bring it to the commission for motion.
Make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Moving second to approve the street naming. Any, Young, any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That street is renamed. Our recommendation. This is a request by the City of Waterloo to name a public alley as East Hanover Street, located between Logan Avenue and East Fourth Street, and West Hanover Street, generally located between David Street and Logan Avenue. Staff report?
This is Graham with staff again. The City of Waterloo is proposing to reclassify an existing alley to a public street due to the high amount of traffic that the current, that the current alley is utilized for. The name being proposed is East Hanover Street. That portion would be located between Logan Avenue and East Fourth Street, and then West Hanover Street would be located, the portion located between Logan Avenue and David Street. Again, the engineering department did review the naming of this and has recommended approval, so it's staff's recommendation that the street be approved, the street naming be approved based on engineering's review and recommendation.
Any questions for staff? Anybody in the audience? Motion or action?
I guess I do have one question. Is this renaming that a street, what's the access to the New 63? Do they have an access to the New 63?
Any other questions?
I would move that we approve.
Second.
Moving second to approve the street naming. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is a request by the City of Waterloo to rename Public Gray Street between Attica Street and Easton Avenue to Van Syken?
Van Syke?
Got it.
Van Syke.
You want me to handle that?
Yep, staff report.
The City of Waterloo is proposing to rename existing Gray Street, which is located between Easton Avenue and Acadia Street to Van Syke Drive. The City of Waterloo did receive this request from a citizen, asking the city to rename the street, which runs for two blocks between Easton Avenue and Acadia Street, to Van Syke Drive. West High School is located adjacent to the east, which has its baseball field named after Danny Van Syke, which is right along this street. The name change would not only reflect the memorial of Danny Van Syke, but it would also be helpful in publicizing baseball events at the Danny Van Syke baseball field. There are no homes located that are addressed off of Gray Street, so changing the name of this street would have no impacts on surrounding residential properties. Once that request is made by the public, the engineering department did review the renaming of the street and did recommend approval of it, so it's staff's recommendation that the street naming, the street renaming be approved.
Questions for staff? Anybody in the audience? Motion or?
I would move that we accept the recommendation by, from staff, to rename the street Van Syke Drive.
Second. Moving second to rename the street Van Syke Drive. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion items?
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second?
Moving second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.